I call the Prince William County School Board meeting to order. We will start with the invocation. Today's invocation is a request of Mr. Justin Wilk of Potomac District. We will start this meeting with a moment of silence. Thank you. Moving on to the Pledge of Allegiance, I understand that Boy Scout Troop 1378 from the Dale City area will be leading us in the Pledge of Allegiance. So I ask that you come up and stand somewhat near the podium here and afterwards lead us in the pledge and afterwards if you can give us your grade, your school, your name, your grade and your school, that would be great, okay? Thank you.
Please join us in the Pledge of Allegiance.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Thank you. Your name, your grade and your school, please.
My name is Lucas Bills and I'm homeschooled.
My name is Isaiah Brown. I'm in sixth grade and I go to Ripon Middle.
I am Zachary Buff. I'm in seventh grade and I go to Assange Middle.
I'm Ashton Williams. I am ninth grade and I go to Heritage Christian School.
My name is Logan Bills and I'm also homeschooled.
Okay, moving on to the approval of the public meeting agenda. A motion is in order.
Mr. Chairman.
Ms. Satterwhite.
I move that the Prince William County School Board approve the public meeting agenda as recommended.
Thank you. Do we have a second?
Mr. Chairman.
Ms. Ralston.
I second.
Thank you. Discussion. Those in favor of the motion, please signify yes by raising your right hand. Thank you.
The vote is seven yes, one absent. Williams, motion passed.
Moving on to the adoption of the consent agenda. A motion is in order.
Mr. Chairman.
Ms. Satterwhite.
I move that the Prince William County School Board approve the public meeting consent agenda as recommended.
Thank you, Ms. Satterwhite. Do we have a second?
Mr. Chairman.
Ms. Ralston.
I second.
Sensing a pattern. Any discussion on the matter? Those in favor of the motion, please signify yes by raising your right hand. Thank you.
The vote is seven yes, one absent. Williams, motion passed.
Okay, we're moving on to item 13.01, which is the Title I Schools Presentation asked for by Ms. Ralston.
Good evening, Chairman Sawyer, School Board members and Dr. Walts. This evening, we were asked by School Board Member Diane Ralston to present on Title I Programming within the Division. We will be sharing information summarizing the Title I Program models, staffing and resource support for Title I schools. We will be talking about our current reality for Title I schools with respect to standards of learning and phonological awareness literacy screening data. I would like to recognize at this time our hardworking Title I principals and our staff members who are in the audience and ask them to stand for recognition. At this time, I would like to invite Michelle Rowe, Supervisor of Title I, to the podium.
Good evening, Chairman Sawyer, Vice Chairman Jesse, members of the board and Dr. Walts. I'll put my glasses on. As Ms. Goss just mentioned, Ms. Ralston requested a brief summary of the Title I Program. The Title I Program Part A, grant allocation included on this slide, currently supports 26 elementary schools and two middle schools in Prince William County. An additional two elementary schools, Swans Creek and King Elementary, are receiving Title I funding for the first time this year. The purpose of this funding is to provide additional resources to schools with a high percentage of economically disadvantaged students so that all students are able to meet challenging state academic achievement standards. Schools with 75% or more of their students qualifying for free and reduced lunch are required to receive Title I funding and it's at the discretion of the School Division to serve schools below that threshold. And historically, we've served schools, elementary schools at about the 50% rate and middle schools at about the 70% rate. While schools are identified for Title I funding by the percentage of low-income children, school allocations are distributed based on the number of students who qualify for free and reduced lunch. So therefore, schools that have a greater number of students receive a larger allocation. The majority of this funding is used to hire additional instructional staff to support with reading and math. It's also used to provide funding for extended day tutoring programs, whether it be before or after school, sometimes on Saturdays, purchasing instructional materials, technology, professional development for teachers and administrators, and to purchase summer reading and math materials to mitigate the summer learning loss that commonly occurs. In order to ensure compliance to federal fiscal guidelines, the Title I budget is managed at the central level. These funds are not included in school site-based budgets and are currently also not consolidated with other Title programs. The primary fiscal rule of Title I is that Title I can only be used to supplement resources and services and not supplant. So in other words, it can only be used for resources and services that are over and above what is expected to be provided of all children in the division. Engaging parents is one of the major requirements of the Title I Program. A 1% set aside is mandated for this purpose and 95% of this set aside is given directly to schools for the purpose of engaging parents and families in their students' learning. Each year, Title I school teams comprised of administrators, instructional staff and parents develop parent policies and compacts that describe how families and schools will work together and use this funding to increase student learning. Schools offer at least four workshop-style meetings for families and typically they learn and practice math and reading strategies at meetings so parents are better equipped to help children at home. Each Title I school's parent policy is currently being updated and will be on the school's Title I website for review. Division parent meetings are also held. In fact, we have one coming up later on this month. Parents from all Title I schools are invited to the division parent meeting and so they have an opportunity to learn more about Title I at the division level, ask questions, provide feedback and recommendations for improvement. Additionally, we collect parent surveys, information, and the 2016 Title I Parent Survey included responses from 965 parents. 91% of the parents who had children in the math support program indicated high satisfaction and reported that students understood math concepts better as a result of the program and 94% of parents who had children in the reading program reported that their children improved in their reading skills. 86% of the parents reported satisfaction with the program either most or all of the time. A growth area for us would be to improve attendance at our Title I family events. 55% of the parents reported attending at least one event. But our focus this year is not only to support and improve the attendance at these events but to really see family engagement as an improvement strategy and not just a series of isolated events. This slide shows the two types of program models that schools can choose to implement. Schools with a poverty rate of at least 40% can choose to operate a school-wide program. All of our Title I schools meet this criteria and this model has become the more common model to implement not only in our division but neighboring divisions and across the state. The school-wide concept is based on research showing that pullout services for low-performing students typically are less effective than coordinating wide-reaching improvement strategies that could impact all aspects of the school's instructional program. Individual students at these schools are not identified as Title I students. Any student in the school may benefit from the resources. Title I schools implementing a school-wide program must develop and annually evaluate a school-wide plan and the first step in the school-wide planning process is to conduct a needs assessment and this planning team is led by the school's administration and includes instructional staff, specialists such as guidance counselors, curriculum specialists and parents. The needs assessment includes an analysis of performance on the state assessments and it is disaggregated, so we're looking at groups of students and those groups of students would include students who are economically disadvantaged, students with disabilities, English learners, students from major ethnic and racial groups as well. The plan has to also explain how the schools will identify students in need of support, provide interventions and then monitor their progress. The other model is the targeted assistance model and that was the predominant model implemented in Prince William County till about eight years ago. In the targeted assistance model, students are identified to receive Title I services based on multiple academic criteria such as state assessments, division assessments and sometimes teacher rating scales. The Title I funds in this type of model can of course be used to hire additional instructional staff to support with reading and math and purchase materials and some of the same things I mentioned earlier with a school-wide program, but it can only serve a specific group of children and that's the children who are identified as at greatest risk for not meeting academic standards. So basically, this type of program must provide evidence that the Title I funding stream flows only to those targeted students. This slide includes the current reality of the reading SOL pass rate for all students in Title I schools for the last three years. The data is reported on the VDOE School Report Cards and this data does not include adjustments for state accreditation purposes. In reviewing three years of reading data, there were six Title I schools that had a pass rate of 70% or better in 2014. In 2015 and 16, there were 16 Title I schools who earned at least the pass rate of 70%. While some improvements have been made since 2014, of course, there's always room for improvement in closing the achievement gap. You can see from this slide that each of the 28 Title I schools are unique in terms of their pattern of performance. My goal as the program supervisor is to increase the number of schools that are achieving a pass rate of at least 70% so that by the end of this year, we can say 100% of them have achieved that benchmark. And of course, goals for schools that are already at that mark would be to increase their performance by at least three to five percentage points depending on where their current performance is. Some of the action steps that my office has taken to support Title I schools include working collaboratively with the Office of Student Learning and Accountability to assign division-level staff members, to serve on Title I school improvement teams to help with the school improvement planning efforts. Professional developments have, specialists have delivered job-embedded professional development targeting specific components in reading for the areas of balanced literacy and those professional development sessions are usually identified at the school level based on their unique need. Title I specialists have also assisted with unpacking standards and helping teachers navigate through the curriculum expectations during collaborative learning team meetings. And Title I also works collaboratively with the Office of Special Education and particularly with CEIS program to help schools develop a multi-tiered systems of support, which I believe you'll hear more about later on. And we've also conducted instructional rounds with staff at the school level so we can get into classrooms and see what's happening and with efforts to just improve the next level of work to improve performance. So based on this data and input from Title I principals and also through our observations through instructional rounds, the Title I office will also take additional steps this year in providing professional development to increase alignment and the cognitive level of independent practice students are engaged in during the reading and writing workshop. That would be their independent practice. We're also offering a study group for Title I reading teachers focused on building academic vocabulary because we know that many students, not just English learners in Title I schools, often lag behind in vocabulary development. Moving forward, another strategy that will be utilized includes learning from our high-performing Title I schools. As a start in highlighting best practices, Mr. Provencio and his reading team from Minneville Elementary and Ms. Ellington and her reading team from Mullen will be sharing how they've established a culture of literacy at this year's Reading Recovery Administrators Institute happening later this month. Additionally, Mr. Brewer, the principal at Aquaquan Elementary, has also invited and agreed to have instructional staff visit Aquaquan to learn about the practices they've put in place to ensure that all students are achieving at high levels. This slide, similar to the reading, is the current status for the math SOL performance for the last three years. Just like reading, this data is reported on the VDOE Report Cards and it does not include adjustments for state accreditation purposes. Once again, schools are unique in their trends. In 2014, there were 17 schools that had passing rates of at least 70%. In 2015, there was an increase to 20 and last year, we had 18 schools in this range. Three of those 18 schools had a pass rate of 90% or better. Once again, my goal as the program supervisor is to move the cohort of schools so we have more schools achieving at at least that 70% pass rate and continuous goals for, improvement goals for those who are already there. Some actions that were taken by the Title I math coordinators include assisting schools with building an early mathematics program. We've been using the research and program elements of assessing math concepts and developing number concepts by Kathy Richardson. We hold monthly meetings with our Title I math teachers so that we have an opportunity to study instructional strategies relating to the early number sense skills, other standards as well. Last year, we had a focus on a number talks, implementing number talks in our classrooms to improve our students' numeracy skills and increase the discourse that happens in mathematics. Title I math teachers worked with classroom teachers on this to implement this practice in the classrooms. This year, in response to our SOL strand data, we plan to use a lesson study professional development model to study math standards that have been historically challenging for students. And just like in the area of reading, our approach to improving student performance has been primarily through a professional development approach so that we build the capacity of the teachers and all the instructional staff at Title I schools. Must have, sorry about that. All right. This slide has data that is available that measures literacy performance at early levels and it's the Kindergarten Phonological Awareness Language Screening Assessment, or PALs for short. Kindergarten students are assessed using PALs in the fall and the spring. And this slide includes a graph that compares the fall data to the spring data for certain PAL subtests. The brighter blue bar is the fall data and the darker blue bar next to that indicates the spring data and the gray bar, if you could see that behind, is the expected benchmark students are expected to achieve in both the fall and the spring. On average, kindergarten students in Title I schools are meeting or exceeding these benchmarks on subtests such as alphabet recognition, beginning sounds, letter sounds and spelling. Generally, kindergarten students are showing good progress from the fall to the spring. However, beginning sounds when presented within a word is a growth area that we will need to target. Strategies to address this area include continued professional development for all new teachers new teaching kindergarten and working with our reading specialists to ensure that these early literacy skills are not being taught in isolation but within the context of the reading and writing of text. So of course, like any other program or school, the Title I office recognizes there's both celebrations and challenges through data reflection, collaboration among school staff, central office staff and families, and most importantly, by establishing a culture of high expectations for all students. We will continue to work towards closing the achievement gap and ensuring excellence and equity for all. Thank you for your time this evening and for your interest in the Title I program.
Thank you. Open up to discussion. Ms. Ralston.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. How often do you have parent involvement meetings?
At the division level. We've had a fall and a spring and in both cases, we offer two meetings. So we offer an east and a west in the fall and an east and a west in the spring to make it easier for parents to attend. We are considering adding a winter meeting this year so that would be three times.
And as far as test results that we see here, how often do you report progress to this board, to everybody?
This is the first time I've been asked to do a presentation on Title I.
The Title I? Okay. Can I hear from some of the principals, especially my principals? Mr. Provencio and Ms. McDonald. When people think of Title I programs, they think of kids that cannot be taught very much and that's not the case at all. If you give everybody an opportunity and you think that they can do a good job, then you put forth that energy and they do. When Title I started back in the 80s, I don't want to go too far back because it really was a long time ago. Parents were more involved by law than they are today. So whether you come or not, your child still gets that same service. Back then, you would still get the same service but we would wag the finger at you and say, why aren't you there? It wasn't so much that they were looking for parents to educate their kids but it was to give the parents an opportunity to find out what principals are doing, what teachers are doing so that in some way, we could help out too. But of course, these are two principals from my district and I know we have some other principals and I want to hear from them too, if the chairman doesn't mind.
Anything that they're comfortable doing, I'm okay with. We wanted to monitor time as well, but if they weren't part of the presentation or you would like to ask them, go from there.
Okay, so, please.
Chairman Sawyer, Dr. Walts, thank you very much for having the discussion about the importance of Title I schools. All 28 of those schools are, we're just working really, really hard and we're all at different places in our journey and it's amazing when we have our collaborative conversations about just the hard work and equity, sweat equity that's going into achieving excellence for every single student and I think that's what Title I does is that it provides those extra resources to help every single child perform at their absolute best. We're all at different places in our journey but we're all very, very determined and focused on that end result, which is excellence for not all students, each student, which will help all students. So thank you for starting the conversation, appreciate it.
Thank you.
All right. I'm Antoinette McDonald, principal at Bel Air and as a new principal, I'm really, really excited with the data that I've received this year, beginning in July, and seeing the opportunities of all of our students at our school. As a very diverse population and a lot of children that look like me, it's refreshing to know that I have staff that are extremely supportive and parents that are extremely supportive and all feel that all students can be successful. With my staff, I'm able to hold them accountable and have them hold me accountable in regards to providing just stellar 21st century education no matter the backgrounds of our students. So the Title I program, this support in the budget, the staff is extremely knowledgeable on curriculum documents, activities, et cetera. It's just a wonderful program and I'm, just like Mr. Provencio, very excited that we're on different playing fields. However, we're able as administrators to just latch on to each other and learn from each other. This is really awkward to be called out, to be called out, but I'm excited to have the opportunity to be heard for sure and thank you for your leadership.
Thank you. Any other board members with questions or comments? Mr. Brand.
Mrs. Sawyer, thank you for the opportunity to talk. Ms. Rowe, thank you for coming back. I was on the other side at the last two meetings and I think I saw you out there waiting for an opportunity to speak to us, so.
Third time's the charm.
I'm glad you're here tonight and I'm glad you finally have the opportunity to speak to us tonight. You mentioned, I think it was at King Elementary School and Swans Creek.
Correct.
You don't have to do this tonight on the spot, of course, because you may not have the data, but would it be possible to get some of the statistics, some of the reading scores and math scores for those schools as well over the last few years? Maybe just emailed to us or sent to us?
Absolutely, absolutely. I believe they weren't included because technically they weren't a Title I school for the last three years, but absolutely.
Yeah, and I understand that, that you didn't need to include them, but if you could, I would appreciate that.
Sure.
Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Brand. Additional comments, questions? Mr. Deutsch.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. Thank you all for coming out. Thank you to the principals for being here. Thank you, Ms. Goss. So just a few questions. I guess I'm a little surprised that we're going for a 70, 80% pass rate for the grades here because that means, that's not like scoring 70, 80% on a test, that's just a pass rate, which means 30% of elementary kids still aren't like passing reading.
Correct.
So what's, I guess, why, why is that the case? What are we doing to, and then like what are we doing to keep moving, moving those rates up because everybody needs to be able to read in elementary school?
So when, in my discussions and considering SMART goals that are specific, measurable, achievable, that is certainly just a starting point, that is not an ending point. And considering where we are and where we want to be and we want 100% of those schools falling into that category, but schools that are already there, of course, that expectation would be that they would continue to improve. But for schools that are far from that mark, we want to set incremental targets that they can achieve and, you know, find that to be a reality. We're certainly moving the needle on a lot of the schools that we've been supporting but some of the leaps might be great and like I said, each school is so unique and where they currently are. When you look at a cohort of 28 schools, it seemed to be sort of an achievable target and if we were there and all schools made continuous progress, I think we'd be moving in the right direction.
Do we have a timeframe for when we're hoping that all schools are going to be hitting at least 70% pass rates in reading and math by?
Well, my timeframe would be by the end of this year.
Do we think that's achievable or?
I do. I do think that's achievable.
Cool. You mentioned resources for helping engage parents and that's awesome. Is there anything we're doing with the PTO groups at those schools to help, you know, add more members, help out with them? Because often those are a huge resource for the schools and sometimes schools that have more economically diverse student bodies have a harder time recruiting members. Are we doing anything to help maybe beef them up or give assistance or?
That is a challenge. That is a real reality of getting more parents to participate. I hold two meetings with all the Title I staff each year and it's devoted just to family engagement. We have schools share best practices because we do have schools that have very high numbers of parent attendance. So we try to learn what's bringing those parents out in those particular schools and we share those ideas all the time.
Very cool. And then, so what are, we mentioned on here, there are two middle schools that count as Title I. What are those two schools?
I'm sorry?
What are the two middle schools that are counted as Title I?
Redlin and Hampton Middle School.
Okay, very cool. And then I guess the follow-up question is, what are we doing or, no, what are, why don't, we don't have any. don't, we don't have any Title I high schools. Is there, what are we doing to at least help facilitate more resources to, you know, we have two or three high schools that are in more challenging circumstances, maybe they barely don't hit the marks that y'all laid out, but they have some challenging numbers they're trying to work with?
Correct. So, there's additional support in the division for high schools. I'll let Mr. Bassett speak to that.
So, one of the philosophies that has traditionally been applied as it relates to Title I programming is to intervene with the greatest amount of resources as early as possible with students. Obviously, that doesn't mean that you don't tend to the needs that you have at the high school, and with the limited resources that are available, spread across so many schools, it does require some difficult decisions about when you bring which levels on. High schools, there are very few high schools in the state of Virginia. I think there are two high schools that are Title I high schools. And so, it's not a common practice. Most folks do try to target those resources earlier. But for our high schools, we try to provide coaching support, professional development support to those, to those schools. There are also grant opportunities that we chase to provide additional resources to high schools, to provide them with additional support as well. But it's certainly a place where we could, where we could use some additional resources, particularly in schools that have higher concentrations of students with greater needs.
So, I, one last follow-up, and it's slightly tangential, but at the high school level, what can we do to target more resources to those high schools that need it? Because a lot of our funding formulas are based purely on number of students, or maybe we need some added targeted funds to help boost scores at certain spots?
I was leaning back, Dr. Walts. I didn't see you. Dr. Walts?
Thank you. One thing that we have in our funding formulas is for every child on free and reduced lunch, there is a funding differential for each child. So, a school that would have a higher number of students on free and reduced lunch would get additional dollars. So, the more students you have, the more dollars that you would get. When we get into the budget time, if you're further interested in looking into that, Mr. Klein can give you a couple of examples how that works.
Sounds good.
Anyone else? Ms. Jesse. I'm sorry. Thank you, Mr. Deutsch. Ms. Jesse.
Thank you for coming, and I want to thank Ms. Ralston for putting this on the agenda. As some of you know, I was a Title I supervisor in Prince William County for 10 years, and I know how challenging it can be. I wanted to, as we look at this year, our goal really is to close the achievement gap. We've discussed it as a board, and it's a very serious matter, because although we're saying tonight, there are all these, these are scores that are for the general population, there is no disaggregation of this data this year. So, do you know where your free and reduced, and I was really looking at the data, the free and reduced, where your gaps are? Do you have a sense of where your gaps are in those schools?
I do.
Yeah.
So, again, each school is very unique in that sense. So, I have average pass rates for the reporting groups that I think you're referring to. So, in reading and in math, I would say that groups of students that are having the most challenges are students with disabilities. And the average pass rate is around a 45 percent for both reading and math. Another reporting group in reading that has, I would say, larger gaps is our English learners. We know that, you know, research shows students take five to seven years to really acquire a second language, and unfortunately, our assessment system gives them pretty much one year. And then, perhaps, they get an alternative assessment, however, perhaps, they do not. And they're at about 64 percent in terms of their average pass rate in reading. The economically disadvantaged subgroup in reading is at 67. So, I would say, just to answer your question, the other reporting groups are in the high 60s. Our white subgroup in reading is 80, and Asian is 86, as an average. So, there are definitely gaps that need to be closed. In math, I would say that the data is similar, but our reporting groups, such as our African-American students, LEP, Hispanic, are falling in the lower 70s. So, not as much of a gap in math, and I think that probably speaks to the language, you know, we have a high percentage of LEP students in our Title I schools, and the reading assessment is going to be more challenging. And as I mentioned before, some of our students, even if they are native English speakers, there's a vocabulary deficit that would impact the reading achievement, that sometimes isn't present in the math, or there's different accommodations to take the reading aspect out of the math. So, that's about where we sit with the, with the reporting groups.
Well, I wanted to thank you for, you know, we, we did meet and talk about, because, you know, I have a lot of questions, and I appreciate you giving me the time to sit with you and talk about what our current reality is, because as I told Ms. Goss, and I've told the superintendent, when we come in this boardroom and we present this data, and it just sounds like everything is going along great, and we know that it's not, and it's not just for us, but nationwide, but we have set a goal to close the achievement gap. And I also want to thank the superintendent's staff, as we're looking at ways to really close the gap in a very specific way. So, when you say you set a SMART goal of 70 percent for all of the groups, I think that when you do the current reality formula and you set your SMART goals, you really have to look at where people are and to make sure that your SMART goals are reachable goals and that they are stretch, you know, there are goals that will stretch people. And I, to be honest with you, I'm a little bit concerned that if you set a 70 percent for, I know that everyone wants to be at 70, 75. Isn't it 75 for reading on the state level? For reading?
For state accreditation.
Well, state accreditation is 75.
Those are, those are adjusted. Those are adjusted rates.
And they average them out three over three years?
Actually, that changes.
Well, they do a three-year average.
Correct.
For, for that.
Sometimes four.
So, I would like for you guys to look at, for example, there are some schools where the special education data is really very extremely low, because 45 or so is our average. So, when it's at average, that means that there are some above and some below. So, when you sit down and you decide on your current reality, you really should engage your teachers in setting a goal that they think they can achieve, which stretches them. And for some schools that, I know when I go to Aquaquan, he's not here, they have a stretch goal of 95 percent, because they hit 95 percent. So, then the next year, they may set another two points. But if you're asking people who are at 40 percent to move in one year 40 points, I think when you look at that, you might want to just think a little bit about that.
Yeah, so that 70 percent was for the all students. That wouldn't hold true for the different reporting groups of students. We would definitely have to look at that on an individual basis and set goals.
And I think that's critical to look at, because the reason you're below 70 is those groups. And you really need to look at where those groups are and deal with that, because this year, the state of Virginia has decided, because we're in a transition from, you know, we're looking at that whole waiver thing and the new ESAA, ESSA, and we only have to look at the average.
Ms. Jesse, I think, I think Dr. Walts actually can, is, wants to help answer that question. Dr. Walts?
Could I just finish?
Oh, yes, please.
I think I may answer it for him, or you may not have to answer it at all. But the, next year, they are, I've talked to Dr. Sadat down to the State Department, and next year, they're going to come up with a formula, and we're still going to be accountable for those subgroups. So, I just want you guys to be aware that although this year, the school system looks great, because we're 70, 75 percent, that we keep in mind, and I think we talked about it when we had the meeting, that we look at the subgroups and establish realistic goals. And I also want to thank you for looking at what we call those islands of excellence, where people, there are schools in this county who are Title I schools, doing exceptionally well, and that we all learn from each other. So, that's, that's all I really, unless you feel you need to ask for a question. I'm good.
Dr. Walts?
I'm, I'm good.
Any further discussion? Mr. Walts?
Thank you. Thank you for presenting tonight. Yeah, and I, too, am very concerned about looking at the subgroups and looking at, you know, the groups from my three schools in the Potomac District. Now that Swans Creek has added an elementary school, you know, and I see the variations, and I understand the idea that every school is different. You know, one is doing exceedingly well, one's mixed, and one also is low. And, you know, some of the stark variations, a lot of it is what I see is with the special needs students. And that might be something, you know, to look into at the higher level as well with the special education. But I have a couple of questions as they relate to special ed and the subgroups, and that maybe you can answer. Are there variations in the caseloads for special education teachers in the Title I schools? Meaning, do they have, because they're Title I, do they have smaller caseloads of students on their list, or is it comparable to the other schools?
Yeah. So, Doctor, I'm going to have Dr. Lawson. That's her area of expertise.
Oh, there she is. Okay.
Actually, all schools in Prince William County abide by the student-teacher ratio that the state requires. We are fortunate in that Dr. Walts supports a cutoff, if you will, when it comes to the 24 students that one teacher could have on her, his or her caseload, when the students have a learning disability. In Prince William County, we keep that to 20. That's when it's a Level 1 student, i.e. they're spending most of their time in a general education setting. So, really, the caseload, apart from the numbers dictated by the state, and we are always in compliance, is capped at a certain number, because we have been able to do that.
Thank you. And so, just for clarification, so, what I'm asking is if I was to go to a Dumfries Elementary and look at the caseload of a special needs teacher there, is it going to be comparable to one at, I'm trying to think of an affluent district, Glenkirk Elementary or Ashland Elementary? Are they going to be comparable? I mean, what I'm saying is, if a school like, a Title I school like Dumfries has, you know, clearly a need, and they're a Title I school, do their special education teachers have lower caseloads than some of our more affluent schools? Or is it across the board about the same?
Quite honestly, not every school in Prince William County has multiple programs. So, for example, in Dumfries, they don't have additional programs. They have students with learning disabilities, and that is the only one. Their caseload, if I can remember off the top of my head, is about 17, but that's because of the number of students in the school. I mean, there is a ratio based on the overall population in the school. So, without giving you the data in every school, which we can get for you, specifically about students with learning disabilities, because the other areas have a totally different student-teacher ratio, and those programs aren't in every school.
Okay. Thank you. That's helpful.
Does that answer your question?
Yeah, I believe so. Okay.
Thank you.
Oh, no, there's more. I'm sorry, there's more special education questions. Dr. Lawson, sorry. We were talking a lot about professional learning communities and sharing best practices with these schools. When it comes to special education, in particular, with the Title I schools, are there specific learning communities where those teachers of special needs in the Title I schools are able to collaborate and share best practices amongst one another to help improve? For example, if one school has a 40-point gap compared to the lowest school in their special education math and English scores, is there any time allotted where those teachers can collaborate and share best practices of helping close those gaps in the variations between the schools?
And I think this is what you were asking, but within the schools, there's an opportunity for teachers to work together, whether it's a general education teacher who is co-teaching with a special education teacher. But certainly, there is a collaboration between central office, offices, which includes student learning on Title I.
I think it's also important to note that each of our level associates, the elementary levels in particular, because that's the majority of the Title I schools, hold collaborative team meetings with their principals, in which principals get to talk about their student learning data and can work across schools to have teachers visit each other's schools to look at those best practices that you're talking about and replicate that excellence across the division.
Okay. Another question, this might be more higher level. Grant monies, and we were talking about the monies that's out, the money that is allocated to Title I schools, because they're designated as Title I schools. Does the principal determine the additional positions that they're hired, or does that come down from central office? I'm sorry, I don't know who's answering what, and, yeah. So, is that a site-based decision, or is that something from higher up, and you say, for example, central office? Is it a needs-based? So, if you were to look at a school and see that there's, you know, quite a drop-off in their math passing rates for special education teachers, and that's a need there, do you put that person there and say, "We'll put in, add another math specialist to this building," or is that left to discretion of the individual building principal?
It's a formula. And so, Title I school allocations are only determined by economic need, not academic need. Now, we do put other supports in, we offer other supports to schools that are not achieving at high levels. But Title I funds are not allowed to be distributed based on an academic need. It has to be an economic need. Now, with that said, schools are provided, you know, an FTE allocation each year, and it is at the discretion of the principal whether or not to staff those positions with reading or math, or both, based on their data.
Okay. I think I'm done. Thank you. Appreciate it.
Thank you, Mr. Walts. Ms. Satterwhite?
I'll just be real quick in the interest of time. I just want to comment, I was at Mullen Elementary School for a back-to-school night, and you've talked about parent engagement, and we had a different model of back-to-school night, where the parents were actively engaged in learning. And of course, at Mullen, the parents are bringing their kids, and it was a joy to walk into every classroom and see the parents actively engaged with games with their students. I also met a family engagement specialist who was visiting from out of state and working with the school. And so, I've seen it in action. I know we're doing it, and so, thank you for everything you're doing for parents.
Thank you. And I would love, really love to brag on Mullen, because we've had some professional development through Dr. Karen Map, who runs Parent University in Boston and is a professor at Harvard, and they're participating in that, and so, we're seeing the implemented practice. So, thank you.
And I'll be just as brief. I'm going to echo what Ms. Satterwhite said, for the most part, is that obviously, parent engagement is the key factor. I mean, it's, to me, it is, anyway, in my non-expert role, and obviously, I'm not the expert in this field, you guys are, but for, but for my role as a citizen, I mean, the more parents can be involved, the better. The more we can get, get parents involved in low-income areas, and like, like the ones that I grew up in, it's very clear that those who have parents waiting at home for their kids to go over homework right away have an advantage. So, the more we can get lower-income families involved, obviously, is, I think, a key, and again, echoing what Ms. Satterwhite said. So, I thank you again for the presentation.
Thank you.
Thank you. All right, we are moving on to citizens' comment time. Get my notes organized here. I'm going to call, we have 10 speakers signed up ahead of time, two speakers at the door, so I'm going to ask that, I'm going to call everybody up. And so, if we can clear the front row here, guys, if you don't mind, we're going to call up some speakers. You guys can move around. We got to call everybody up here. If you guys don't mind moving back one row or so there, that'd be great. We've got, our first speakers are joint speakers. We've got Amanda Kramer and Eloise Brayfogle. Then, we've got Riley O'Casey, Steve Bender, Brian Pace, Amy Cannon, Rebecca Anderson, Danica Rome, Mario Reynoso, Dave Dooley, Ginger Jabs, and then to the two sign-ups at the door, Richard Jesse and Winston Forrest will be our speakers. So, standard decorum, I know many of you spoke before, but standard decorum applies. Please use proper decorum in front of the board. Everybody will get three minutes to speak. The timer will be clicked on the monitor above my head. When I remember to click on it, you'll see your time. Yellow will come up at 30 seconds. That means get it going. And red comes up at zero, and we'll ask you to step aside. Again, use proper decorum at all times. Otherwise, you'll be asked to step aside from the podium, and don't be afraid to adjust the microphone as needed, so you can speak directly into it. New mics. it. New mics, you kinda gotta talk right into them. So our first joint speakers are students from Battlefield High School and Reagan Middle School, Amanda Kramer and Eloise Brayfogle.
Good evening. My name is Amanda Kramer, and my address is on file with the clerk. I attend Battlefield High School and am on the archery team, where this past year I became the best high school female shooter in the state of Virginia. Not very many people know about us, I've been asked on countless occasions what we do. Well, in the past four years, we've gone to state, national, and world tournaments, where not only did the team win, but individuals took some of the top places. We've traveled to eight states and participated in many local tournaments as well. Wherever we go, we represent one of the best programs in the state. Nobody is more thankful for the program than the coaches and archers themselves. Going into high school, we were unsure if there was going to be a team or not. I was worried I would have to leave archery and middle school, but we were persistent, and the high school welcomed us into the Bob Cut family. When I walk down those halls, I see many familiar faces, but my favorite ones to see are those of my teammates. We go to school together, hang out together, and shoot together. That's a bond not even an arrow can sever. We are welcoming new shooters to the program this year, and I'm excited to see how we do come the state tournament in March. We're a great team with great shooters, a great coach, and a great support system. We may not be well-known, but as we have always been, we will still be here, still shooting, and making Virginia proud.
Good evening. Tonight, I, Eloise Brayfogle, the top female shooter on the middle school team, and pleased to share with you the joys of the archery program. Since I got my start in sixth grade, archery's been a blessing. Prior to tryouts, I shot extremely badly and thought I would never make the, yeesh, would never make the team. My mom convinced me to try out, and I've been forever grateful. That Christmas, my parents bought me my own bow, it's gotten me through all the competitions with good and bad. The great people on the team have also gotten me through all the tough and stressful slots of competing. The whole team acts like a big family, we joke, tease, and certainly fight like one. Through archery, I have met many people I never would've talked to otherwise, and you could even say I gained many brothers and sisters. During the competitive season, we as a team eat, breathe, and live archery. We've even had practices at 6:30 before school, had to come back at 5:00 PM after the other teams finished practice. And let me tell you, coming into the gym after wrestling stinks. But it was all worth it. During our travel for competitions, I have had many opportunities to meet new people. I once even shot with the person who won the National Archery in the Schools Program National Tournament in Louisville, Kentucky. Speaking of winning, I myself had many successful tournaments as well. I won the Cubic Classic held at Ronald Reagan Middle School and placed in many other competitions. We as a team also had a good season. We recently came back with our second personal world championship. At this most recent tournament, we won, and I personally placed second. None of this would've been possible without the constant support of my fellow teammates, friends, and coach. Thank you, and good night.
Just a brief, Ms. O'Casey, before I call you up, just brief chairman's privilege here, I see Mr. Buckford, the coach of the, the archery teams here as well. Mr. Buckford, at the risk of speaking for Ms. Satterwhite, we are going to invite you and your entire team here to be recognized for your world championship, and we'd like to, we'll give you proper notice, so you can tell your families and everything, but congratulations, girls, wonderful, thank you very much for all that you do. Thank you. Sorry, Ms. O'Casey, you're, you're now up.
Good evening, Chairman Sawyers, board members, Dr. Waltz. My name is Riley O'Casey, and my address is on file with the clerk. Our children in Prince William County don't have burning political agendas. Their agendas include feeling safe and supported, being respected by adults, they should have adults in their lives they can trust, access to the services they require to be successful, opportunities for remediation and enrichment in their classes, access to high-quality teachers with high-quality learning opportunities, and the chance to develop as a whole person. Robert Frost wrote, "And I shall be telling this with a sigh, somewhere ages and ages, ages hence, two roads diverged in a wood, and I, I took the one less traveled by, and that has made all the difference." Everyone must follow roads, some only for themselves and some for the betterment of others. There are roads to success and roads to disaster. Prince William County schools must be on the road to success, and we all play a part. I am inspired by the continued collaboration between PWEA and PWCS. All agendas and diversions have been cast aside, and the children are the focus. Because our children want and need small class sizes, great teachers, functional technology, adequate resources, less standardized tests, and a school board who will fight for them. Walt Disney said, "Whatever you do, do it well. Do it so well that when people see you do it, they will come back and see you do it again." Now is the time for this board to change the focus and get back on the road needed to make education better for our children. Thank you.
Thank you. Our next speaker is Steve Bender. Mr. Bender?
My name is Steve Bender, my address is still on file with the clerk, and dare I say, I still vote in Burnsville District. Chairman Edlard Sawyers, members of the school board, Dr. Waltz, your last speaker tonight, Winston Forrest, will be speaking on behalf of the Board of Elections, and I will let him explain the board's reasoning behind their position on the school calendar question. I know that Mr. Trenham wrote, all of you, a couple of weeks ago, about a third alternative on the calendar, sort of a hybrid between the two that were proposed by the committee. I wasn't sure if staff would have anything on it tonight, so I brought you this one page side by side by side, that color codes and numbers each of the day, so you can figure out where, where the differences are. There's really only four. His calendar starts a week early, it ends the, a week before the post-Labor Day option. And it has one fewer day by taking back into the school calendar Thursday, the 21st, the, the scheduled first day of the Christmas break, and also April 2nd, Easter Monday. And it's only, since it drops a day, it's only 180-day calendar, which is the minimum required to have. Only the Trenham option addresses the issue of the Electoral Board, and only one of their issues, which is no school on election days, June 12th, the primary. Both of these, all of these calendars have about 12 days' worth of hours built in, but we can't take any more days away, because we're required to have 180-day calendar. If you guys aren't going to address the concerns that the Electoral Board has expressed to you by a letter, then you at least have to address the parking issue. Fifty-three elementary schools, 14 middle schools, are gonna have parking problems at the November gubernatorial election, because that's a 40% turnout, especially the elementary schools. I've talked to the area superintendents, it can't just be left to the principals and the chief to figure it out. It needs to be a coordinated plan, division-wide, that makes sure the schools understand the importance of keeping spaces for the voters. Because nothing irritates me more than hearing that people came to vote, there was nowhere to park, so they went home. I doubt you want a fourth option, but if you added that whole last week in June to the pre-calender, you could take back the two election days and close schools completely. That's really all I have to say on the calendar. I'd like to jump back to that Title I presentation. You guys haven't solved the problem yet. You're not going to solve the problem. It's kinda like getting Congress to reduce federal spending. It is never gonna happen. Once again, I'm finding, I'm in total agreement with, with Chairman Sawyers. And the idea that parents need to be involved is critical, we really need to find a way to get them more involved, if it means maybe 2% or 3%, we need to do that.
Thank you. Our next speaker is Brian Pace. Mr. Pace?
Well, thank you. My address is still on file. I apologize, I was not here for the last board meeting. Anything happen? I heard that it went for about, well, about, and wrapped up about 6 o'clock tonight, and then you just went on into your next one. So Sean, you have any second doubts about taking the job? I don't actually have prepared notes here, or a prepared statement. I do have some additional information that might be of use. This is an ongoing conversation, clearly, that's what the board decided or elected to do, is to engage in having more conversation, more dialogue, more information, and so I'm game. So what I did was a little bit of research, and talked to some folks through Albemarle County, which I believe has a model policy regarding adding sexual orientation, gender identity to the nondiscrimination policies for their school district. They did it on November 12th, 2015. So this whole idea that, you know, nothing can be done until XYZ didn't play out the, quite the same way in Albemarle County. They do have an enumerated policy, which was voted on, on, on November 12th. It has gone into effect for both their students and for their employment contract, or employment policy, and there has been no eight-hour board meetings, there have been no great bits of drama floating around, it has just happened. And by the way, Virginia's Beach City Schools did the same thing at their August 18th meeting of 2015, and they did by consent, so there was a unanimous vote to do that. So this is something that can be done. This is not something that has to revolve around bathrooms. All of these policies that I'm mentioning to you, you'll have in your email box with PDF links by the time you get home tonight. So I do, I've already spoken to a couple of folks here, I look forward to talking to more of you as we move forward with this process, with this learning curve, with this education, if you will. I am pretty much done, so I do wanna just mention that y'all need to really make sure that you dress up to Mr. Waltz's standards, because y'all are falling apart compared to what he's wearing. So that's pretty much all I have to say for this meeting, but thank you for your time.
Thank you. Our next speaker is Amy Cannon. Amy?
Good evening, my name is Amy Cannon, and my information is on file with the clerk. I would like to start by pointing out that many of those in favor of adding sexual orientation and gender identity to the nondiscrimination policy would've been here for the September 21st meeting, but we could not even get in the building. When I was in high school, one of my best friends was gay. I didn't know it then, because as Christians, we were taught that being gay was bad. So I defended my friend and stood up for him when he was called names, but I did it by denying his identity. I insisted loud and often that he was not gay. It never occurred to me to ask him, and I doubt he would've told me the truth if I had asked. It breaks my heart that he died before I had a chance to tell him how sorry I am that I didn't know how to be the friend he really needed. I loved him like a little brother, but I was never the safe space for him that I should've been. That knowledge has informed my actions for many years now. It taught me to become a safe space for my daughter and her friends, and my own friends and family members. And now the school board has the opportunity to create safe spaces at school for Prince William County students, faculty, and staff, a place where they are protected from bullying and discrimination in all its forms. How many of our students and faculty are right now living in a closet that we created for them by not protecting them? We have the power to tear those closets down with five simple words, sexual orientation and gender identity. I've heard a lot of misinformation about this policy. First of all, it isn't about bathrooms, that part is already off the table. This is about discrimination and safety. We need to be as vigilant as we have always been with regards to our kids, but adding these five words to the policy will not put them in any more danger than they already are on a daily basis. We can make the world safer for our kids by teaching them that a predatory adult can be anyone, but being transgender or gender non-conforming doesn't make it any more likely that a person is a predator than anyone else. I've heard people say that this is not the purview of the school board, that the board should be focused on education. What is more important to education than safety? It's well documented that all students learn better in schools where they are protected from discrimination and bullying. In addition, several people mentioned that there were no documented instances of discrimination for these reasons in Prince William County in recent years. But how are you supposed to file a complaint for discrimination when you are not protected by the nondiscrimination policy? By saying that these five words don't need to be added, you're saying that LGBTQ people are less worthy of our protection than those the policy already protects. Some of you claimed that you hadn't had time to study this policy change sufficiently, even though you all knew in June that this was on the agenda for September. I offer you now some of the resources that exist in our county. Equality Prince William, PFLAG, and Glisten are just three of the many organizations that you can reach out to. Members of all of these organizations stand ready to attend town halls or serve on any committee you might put together to study this further. I would like to publicly thank Mr. Sawyers for providing leadership on this issue. We stand with him and appreciate that he stands with us. I urge you to reconsider waiting until June to vote on this. There are students and staff right now living in fear in our schools. You can change that.
Thank you. Our next speaker is Rebecca Anderson. Rebecca?
At the last school board meeting, each speaker had one point in common, safe spaces are important. When I was growing up and attending public schools, I always felt different, but I wasn't sure how and why I felt that way. I felt high, high school band was a safe space, but most of the rest of my school experience was less so. When I wasn't in a safe space, I felt like I had to be a pretend version of myself in order to avoid being perceived as different, for fear of judgment or negative attention for those who were perceived as normal. For a certain amount of time, my church was also a safe space. When I was 15, I was saved and baptized at my church, and at school, I attended FCA, the Fellowship of Christian Athletes, where you didn't have to be a Christian or an athlete to join. We were inclusive to any person who wanted to attend and careful to keep our meetings a safe space for all, because it was the best way to show God's love. I went away to college and joined a gospel choir as a way to stay connected to my Christian friends, and when I returned home on break, I attended my home church with family. During the sermon, the preacher talked about how terrible homosexuality is, and how anyone who allows a homosexual into their life, even as a friend, is inviting the devil into their heart. I was hurt by those words, and was downright heartbroken when the people around me started cheering and applauding by what they had just heard about my friends and about some of the things that I was still trying to learn about myself. I walked away from church for almost 10 years, and it took a long time before my husband and I could find a safe space in which I could worship God with other people again. While speaking at the last school board meeting, I came out for the very first time in public, and I stayed here for about an hour after speaking, and the hostility in the room was palpable. It was the least safe space that I have ever, that I had ever encountered. In the name of God, people said hurtful things about me, my friends, my current and former students, and an entire room of people cheered. On my way out, people in red shirts said things directly to me that I do not wish to repeat. And I heard speakers quote a statistic, that there have been zero cases of LGBTQ discrimination in PWCS in the last number of years, and I wondered if that was because for a person to file discrimination, they have to out themselves, and to be out as an employee of PWCS when there is no nondiscrimination language that protects us, that is a big risk. I heard a number, a member of the school board refer to students as either transgender or um, normal, and I wanna pause for a teachable moment. Cisgender is a term, is a term for a person whose gender aligns with the sex which, which they were assigned with at birth, and on a side note, there is no such thing as normal. I also heard many speakers equate transgender people to sexual predators, and was led to believe that some of the same speakers operate under the assumption that my awesome employer, PWCS, doesn't or won't maintain a safe space for cisgender students if a nondiscrimination policy were passed for LGBTQ students and employees, and that is false. I want to thank the school board for taking time to listen to all perspectives on the subject, so that all people, including LGBTQ students and employees, can have safe spaces in which to learn and work in PWCS. Hashtag Timberwolves Rock. Thank you.
Thank you. Our next speaker is Danica Rome. Danica?
Hey, for the third time in three meetings, how y'all doing? Good to see ya. My name is Danica Rome, I'm a journalist, I'm a lifelong Prince William County resident, and I'm a transgender woman. I'm actually speaking in favor of Lovely Jesse's proposal to have the task force to study nondiscrimination issues in Prince William County schools. I think this is a good idea, and I think it's a good way to find common ground and to find middle ground. As someone who spoke in favor of including sexual orientation and gender identity in the nondiscrimination policy the last couple of times, I think it should've passed unanimously, just like we were talking about, like how it did in Albemarle and, you know, other localities, Virginia Beach, Arlington. I thought that should've been just fine. That didn't happen. So in speaking with several opponents afterward, and I had some like, really just nice courtesy, like, you know, just cordial conversations with folks, I realized why this was actually controversial to them in the first place. I asked over and over, do you know a transgender person in your life? Every single one, even the people who were really nice to me, said no. Every single one of them told me no. And a lot of them spoke about transgender people as if they knew who we were, when they didn't know me, they didn't know us. They actually told me they didn't know. So a lot of people are making assumptions about what it means to be transgender without knowing anyone who lives it every day. Instead, we heard- Instead, we heard hundreds of people applaud the speakers who equated us to rapists and pedophiles instead of starting a meaningful dialogue. How can we find common ground with people who talk to us and about us like that? All of that said, governing is the art of half a loaf, and at this point, we have to find common ground with everyone. We have to find common ground with people who are open to supporting the policy change but have concerns about procedures and implementations. Allison, I know you're one of them. I've known you for the last five years, and I'm seriously dedicated to, I want to work with you to get everyone to yes, but I want to work with you especially to get to yes on this. I think we can find a lot of common ground. I honestly do. I really, really do. And I think the task force is a great opportunity to do that. And it's a great opportunity to bring opponents and proponents together. If you all would like some people from the LGBTQ community to serve on it, I would be happy to oblige. I think we can make meaningful progress together so we can both protect and respect all of our students and faculty. And I'll close with this. Back at the George Hampton Middle School renaming, I talked to six of y'all there, and by the way, Mr. Brant, it's nice for you to join this, and five of you all told me one-on-one, face-to-face, that she would vote for this policy. Now, that vote hasn't come up yet. Mr. Sawyers and Ms. Williams tried to put it forward, and by the way, Ryan especially, thank you. Thank you for doing that and for standing by your word. I sincerely appreciate that. But for everyone else who told me that, there is still time. We still have the chance to get to yes.
Thank you.
And I want to work with you to get to yes. Let's do this together.
Thank you. Our next speaker is Mario Reynoso. Mario?
Good evening, members of the school board. My name is Mario Reynoso. My address is on file. I'm a resident of the Neapsco District. So I wanted to just express how I'm not angry at the school board, how the vote went last week, but I was disappointed. I was let down. I know that a lot of the students who wanted to come out and speak for the policy couldn't make it, and many of them, when I told them the news, were so let down. But a lot of them couldn't make it because either they're not out and telling their parents, "Oh, I'm going to go to a school board meeting to speak about a policy involving sexual orientation," could possibly out them, or simply because they're students. They have bedtimes, they have homework, and there are other things they have to take care of. But I can come here and speak to all of you about my experiences as a gay kid in Garfield High School because I've grown the skin from having to deal with epithets, slurs, being pushed around. And I know that if I come out and speak on behalf of these kids, maybe I can change their minds and hopefully let you see how it's like to be a gay kid in our school system. Back in Garfield, the one thing that we had was a very supportive administration. Under Brenda Aiken, she helped to push to make sure that all kids were protected under the policy that we had. But unfortunately, that policy didn't have the teeth that it needed in order to protect LGBT students. And as much as teachers, principals, guides, counselors intervened, because there was no real guidelines to how to protect LGBT students, it was something that was kind of left up in the air, and many teachers and administrators were afraid because they felt like a lawsuit could come from the wrong person. I know that many people in Garfield supported me, and I was so thankful for their support, and forever I'm thankful for the people who helped save my life in high school. But the one thing that I constantly remember are the people who called me horrible names, who pushed my friends around, even ones who weren't gay, even ones who just came off as what was not normal to them, were harassed and bullied. I hid into a shell and didn't allow myself to express who I truly was until after graduation. And every day, I live to regret that. I regret the experiences I missed out on being out in high school. So hopefully, if I can take the time to speak to you, Ms. Ralston, I want to meet with you, and I want to discuss with you, and hopefully we can find some dialogue to build a bridge in order to protect these students. Because I know one thing is for certain. I may just be one person, but I know how these schools are. I went through them. I love Dale City. I love Garfield, and I love George Hampton. And I just want you to know that my door is always open.
Thank you. Our next speaker is Dave Dooley. Dave?
Good evening. My name is David Dooley, and my address is on file. I'm here again to ask you to reconsider the motion approved at the September 21st, 2016 school board meeting to delay the vote to the proposed change to policy 060 to add sexual orientation and gender identity as protected classes for students and faculty members. Why do I bring up this hot topic again? Because it's important to me as a basic civil right, just like allowing women to vote counting as one vote versus three-fifths of a vote bringing racial equality to the voting system. I recently found out that one of my coworkers for the past six months had passed away suddenly. Sorry. It shocked me and broke my heart. He was 55 years old and left a widow after 18 years of marriage. His wife's health had been failing. Their relationship strained because of his work and her care. We recently lost a contract that we all thought we had in the bag, and he was forced to look for other employment company, which he ultimately found. However, my heart broke again for my friend, who loves science fiction as much as I did because he died by his own hands. None of his coworkers and I knew why that he chose to do this. I, as a happy gay man, lost a straight friend after only knowing him for six months. This tragedy has reminded me that suicide rates happen in the school, in the military, and in life. Suicide rates within LGBTQ, lesbian, gay, bisexual, transgender, and questioning community is higher than the straight heterosexual community because they are bullied, they are afraid, and they are not loved by either their straight counterparts, their family members, or the religious community. So please reconsider the motion passed in the last meeting and help stop someone from committing suicide because they believe there's no other option. Please protect the faceless and unknown LGBTQ, not because I'm asking you to, but because it's the right human thing to do. Opponents in making a change to policy mentioned there's no records of bullying, loss of employment, or suicides due to someone's sexual orientation or gender identity. It's not broke. Why fix it? Why do we need this change? It's just another political ploy. I cannot disagree more and believe it's nothing but an excuse. Just because you don't hear a story doesn't mean it isn't one. You can check Google and check the heartbreak around the country and the world. Please reconsider this motion.
Thank you. Our next speaker is Ginger Jabs. Ginger?
Hi, I'm Ginger Jabs, and my address is on file. Good evening. I wanted to come up and speak to you as well about the 060 matter and sexual orientation and gender identity. I want to thank Lily Jesse for proposing the task force. I know you have it in your heart to get to this, and I see it, I feel it, and I want to thank you. I wanted to just say, one of the two times I was here in September, I know I heard Ms. Satterwhite mention a list of things that we would have to look into before anything could ever take place, and it was at least, it felt like a 100-item list, maybe it was only 50, but it sounded like it was overwhelming. And it kind of gave me the feeling, and I hope the board doesn't feel this way, that we need to reinvent the wheel, that we need to step back in our own little vacuum and come up with all of the answers to all of these complex questions. And I just want to say that I hope that we're going to look to other places like Fairfax County, Alexandria, Arlington, whoever has put this type of policy in place or is trying to. I just want to say that I hope that all of you together will look at this and rely on other entities, organizations, to see how they're handling it too. We're not here alone in Prince William County to make this effective. I also wanted to mention that the times I've been here, I have to tell you, the fear and atrocious behavior and the things I heard were really upsetting, and I'm sure other people that felt the opposite of me and not wanting this to go through probably felt they were hearing the same thing. But when I was hearing things as a parochial father, his kids going to a parochial school, he didn't even go to the school, "Come in here and talk about how he felt." He has every right to. It's an amendment, but I felt that was pure bullying. I also feel that Mr. Marshall, I'm sure he's a great gentleman. I've never got to meet him personally. Perhaps I should ask him out to lunch. But I kind of got the feeling that his posture was unless, in the General Assembly, me and other white men decide that we would allow this to happen, will it happen? And I find that bullying for you. I also, of course, heard a lot of nasty comments, and again, that's also bullying, which gets to my point of people, teachers, staff, and kids that are bullied on a daily basis because of their gender identity, because of sexual orientation. I have 16 seconds left. I just wanted to tell you quickly that I kind of liken this to the segregation era. I can see where white fathers would say, "Oh, those black boys aren't coming into my school. They're not going to be with my daughter and lusting after her," and that type of thing. And I just don't want us to get back to that era. That's it.
Thank you. Moving on to the two signups at the door, we've got Richard Jesse is our next speaker. Mr. Jesse?
Good evening, Chairman Sawyers, Dr. Walts, school board members. My address is on file. I want to talk to you today about, and I didn't have any notes because I wasn't planning to speak, but I want to talk to you about what I call "but for." But for a kid going up to the cafeteria line and getting a carton of milk. But for a police officer intervening. But for that kid now faces petty larceny charges and misconduct, I believe being filed by the police department. But for that one action, why does it have to go that far? Now, you can say, and my wife and I attended three or four community meetings with the police department, and we told kids, "This is what you need to do." But you know, kids are kids, and when you have a staff member or somebody in the staff administration, if that police officer was not there, that kid probably would not have missed attending the school that he attended to take the SATs. He would not have now be charged with a misdemeanor and so forth. I think we also need to look at what is a resource officer there for? And I have a feeling that you, as a school board, need to address what roles the police officers have in the schools, what they should and should not be involved in, and take some action on that. Also, look at the demographics of who are being charged by the resource officers on a regular basis and so forth. The whole issue of, "Well, the police officer was black, the kid was black, and the principal was black." My wife was a principal. I can tell you, my daughters felt they got a harder time attending her school than the other kids. You have to understand that just because you're black and you are doing something to another black person doesn't mean you're not discriminating because it could happen. So thank you. The last thing I want to say, it is the school board, the teachers' responsibility to teach the kids. And my parents weren't involved in schools because they were dead. My wife's parents weren't involved in school. It is your responsibility to teach the kids.
Thank you. And our final speaker is Winston Forrest. Winston?
Chairman Sawyers and members of the Prince William County School Board, good evening. My name is Winston Forrest, and my address is on file. I am the Election Communications Coordinator with the Prince William County Office of Elections. We enjoy a close working relationship with the PWC school system because, as you know, a vast majority of our polling places are in the schools. Tonight, I am here to discuss the school calendar for 2017, 2018, which will be voted on tonight. Next year's election is a gubernatorial election, which could see as many as 140,000 Prince William citizens go to the polls. In addition, should Virginia need to elect a new senator, that special election will take place at the same time as the 2017 general election. We would like to propose that schools be closed to all activities for the November 7 general election in 2017 and close the students on June 12, 2018, for the primary election. The two main reasons for our request are: Many of the parking lots for the primary and middle schools have around 150 parking spaces, are already near capacity with staff alone. When schools are open for teacher workdays and parent meetings, space in the lots can be, at best, difficult to find. Adding 1,000-plus voters to the parking for that day, there is just not enough parking to guarantee voter access to the polls. Our second reason involves student safety. We are unable to prevent legally registered voters' access to their polling place. This would include anyone normally barred from entering school grounds. That would include noncustodial parents who vote where their child attends school, individuals who have protective order against them, offenders who are registered under Megan's Law, and any others who have been banned by PWCS. The Attorney General in 2006 gave an opinion which stated, "Access must be granted even though children are present." It is for these reasons we request that the calendar, under consideration, be amended to close the schools for all activities in November 2017 and for students in June 2018. We realize that this may seem to be an inconvenience. However, we believe student safety considerations and access to the polls should be the highest priority when considering whether or not to close. Thank you for your time.
Thank you. And that concludes citizens' time. Moving right along to item 15.01, the multi-tiered systems of student support. Ms. Goss, this has your name on it.
Good evening again, Chairman Sawyers, school board members, and Dr. Walts. This evening, we were asked by school board member Diane Ralston to present on our multi-tiered systems of support for students with academic and behavioral challenges. This evening, Dr. Lawson, Director of the Office of Special Education, will provide details of those academic and behavior supports in the partnership between schools, parents, and central office personnel that supports student academic and behavioral success. At this time, I invite Dr. Lawson to share about some of our division efforts to ensure that our supports and interventions successfully impact student achievement.
Thank you, Ms. Goss. Good evening, Chairman Sawyers, ladies and gentlemen of the board, and Dr. Walts. This presentation will provide a brief overview of the process used in Prince William County to address the behavior and academic supports that some children require in order to access the curriculum. However, I can't pull up that slide. Thank you. Thank you. The intervention process that we use in Prince William and any other county, quite honestly, is a general education process, and it begins when either the parent or a teacher suspects that the child is having some concerns over their progress. The team members discuss the difficulty in the classroom. They consider the possible impact of language and culture and develop ways in which the student can access the academic or behavioral supports needed. This is called achieving academic excellence with equity. Improving academics and behavior outcomes in school is about ensuring that all children have access to effective and accurately implemented instructional and behavioral practices. have access to effective and accurately implemented instructional and behavioral practices. A multi-team, oh, dear me. Sorry. A multi-tiered system of supports, and you can see the diagram in front of you, I'm sorry, the writing is rather small on the pyramid itself. A multi-tiered system of supports is an evidence-based model. It is a problem-solving model that provides a structure to identify, implement, and evaluate what in fact is going on with the student that prevents them from reaching their full potential. It is a use of a research-based process. It is effective in the problem-solving area because it is based on the use of strategies with fidelity, and the problem-solving process itself has an implementation of the instructional intervention plans. The problem-solving process is applicable to all three tiers of instruction or intervention, behavioral or academic, and can be used for problem-solving at the classroom level and also at the division level. PWCS is using this multi-tiered system of support. This culturally-responsive system of interventions uses evidence-based models of schooling that employ database problem-solving to integrate academic and behavioral instruction. In other words, it's a way that we can look at why this child is not successfully accessing the curriculum. We can't just guess, we have to use strategies in order to ascertain what that problem may be. Those strategies have to be implemented with great fidelity. We can't try them for two days and then say they don't work. They are monitored, and the progress is monitored over time. The need for intentional, thank you, whoever that was, the need for intentional and explicit instruction, in 2000, there was a national reading panel. They looked at basically where we were in terms of how we can and where we need to target our work when we are teaching children to read. The multi-tiered reading model emphasizes early identification, supplemental instruction, ongoing assessment, and the use of assessment data to identify students who are in need of greater interventions than can be reasonably provided in a general education classroom setting. This multi-tiered system of supports is based on research that states that good, good, first-classroom instruction should meet the needs of most students, but an efficient system of providing high-quality interventions is required in order to meet the needs of all students. We also have a way to look at behaviors, which came first, the chicken or the egg? There is also a need in all schools, and this is a national conversation, to look at how we can intervene when a child's behavior is getting in the way of their academic progress. This is a good reason to look at whether or not we should conduct, whether the child is a child with special needs, or whether this is a child in a general education setting, a functional behavior assessment, an FBA. Just as we have students that demonstrate the need for academic supports, we also have students who demonstrate the need for behavioral supports. In the same way as the academic supports, its behavior is, sorry, the intervention is data-driven, it's produced by a team, and its cause or its reason is to look at why, what is the underlying issue that is getting in the way of that child's success? An FBA, Functional Behavior Analysis, can look at existing information, but it can also look at and ask for additional information. Based on that information, we put in place proactive strategies, which again, should be implemented with fidelity, and determine whether those strategies are or are not working, come back to the table, assess whether we need to put other strategies in place. It's an ongoing process, it doesn't stop with one meeting. We can ensure, for children with special needs, FAP, Free and Appropriate Public Education through the FBA process. When we have completed that functional behavior analysis, we look at what in fact we are going to put in place in terms of behavior education, if you will, in order to give the student the support that he or she needs. A BIP, a Behavior Intervention Plan, is not a disciplinary process. Its intent is to ensure that students can access their education. It is a plan that utilizes all of the behavioral interventions, positive behavior interventions, and again, it is carried out with fidelity over time. It is not a static document. We can come back and look at this to see how well or not this is working, and at the end, we may, with actually talking to the student, the student needs to be involved in this, and talking to parents, we can actually bring the whole process to an end, but that can take a while. We may have to go back after time. Some children need reassurance after the time that they have had these interventions, and we are available to do that. So, as you have heard, we do have supports in place in Prince William County through our multi-tiered intervention system. We are working diligently throughout the county to actually build capacity in all of our schools, whether they are using academic interventions or behavioral interventions. These supports provide quality instruction for all students. And most importantly, perhaps, they assist in the prevention of disproportionate representation of minority students in special education. That had been identified as a national issue since basically 1976. So, we are addressing, I may say, pretty successfully, that whole issue within our schools with collaboration between the schools, the principals in those schools, the teachers who come to our presentations on behavior supports or reading supports, the support of Ms. Goss across all of her department, because we work with other offices, and as always, the support of Dr. Walts. Thank you very much, ladies and gentlemen.
Thank you. Opening up for discussion and questions, Ms. Ralston?
Thank you. Thank you very much for finally getting an opportunity to do this. I'm very excited. When, how often do you have parent, major parent groups?
Well, actually, we had one two nights ago.
Oh, well, thank you.
Through the Parent Resource Center. We sponsored one of our, the Process of Special Education workshops. You know, special education is not just easy to understand, and the first time a parent can hear the words, "We think that your child may have a disability," that has to go through their mind, "Well, what in fact is that, and what does that mean for my child?" So, we have workshops through the PRC, the Parent Resource Center. We start round about this time of the year, let things calm down a little bit, let us get the parents, help them get their children into schools, and we go through a number of workshops, looking at the process, the process of assessment, in order to determine whether or not the child does in fact have a disability. And then afterwards, we also look at the IEP that's developed following that determination.
One other. From time to time, there are some disciplinary problems that come up, and I've always asked the same question, if this child already has an IEP, and yet, behavior is doing something else, so is that IEP set in stone, or can this child have a second look, because it could be something added on?
Absolutely. An IEP, again, is not a static document, but a child with a pattern of given behaviors, we would probably supplement the IEP with, we're all about initials in special ed, with a functional behavior analysis and follow it up with a BIP. Because you can put a goal in the IEP, and it's monitored over time, but we want to have short-term monitoring. So, with a BIP that's based on, what's the underlying cause of this behavior? Why is this child manifesting this particular behavior? We can address that in the short term. The goal in the IEP may reflect what we are going to do in accommodations to address that behavior, but it's really two-pronged, it's not just one thing or the other.
So, there's one IEP per year?
There can be, a parent or the school can actually call for an IEP meeting at any time. So, if a parent has concerns, or the teacher has concerns about the existing IEP, then they can call for an IEP meeting. Now, that wouldn't be a good idea to do it every week, Ms. Ralston.
Well, every, any time I go see a kid that has already has an IEP, and they're displaying something else, so if it gets to my attention, then the first thing I want to know is, what is the contributor to this new behavior? Because that behavior doesn't match this IEP. So, I've always wanted you guys to say, "Oh, okay, we'll slow down and do something else to take a look at what's creating this type of new behavior maybe." I see a lot of this.
You know, some behaviors, especially when there's an external factor to the school, there's a change in the child's life, the goldfish died, which can totally, you know, throw a child off. We need to find out what that is. Now, that's not going to perhaps change an IEP goal, but the first thing that we need to do is to sit down and talk to the child. When you see a child slipping, whether it's a child in the general ed setting or the special ed setting, when you see slippage and significant changes in behavior, it's time to intervene. And that's what we do through the multi-tiered system, either with positive behavior interventions or academic interventions.
Thank you.
Thank you, Ms. Ralston, and Ms. Jesse?
Thank you very much. You know, my favorite phrase is "current reality." What's the current reality with our disproportionality? Is it an issue, or where are we?
Where are we in Prince William County with disproportionality? Okay, the indicators that we report to the state, and the state reports to the federal government on a yearly basis, there are four indicators that look at disproportionality. Indicators nine and 10 basically look at the over-representation of students, minority students in special education, and then 10 looks at the particular area of special education, particular disability that the child may be found eligible for. We are not, we are not disproportionate in Prince William County in indicator nine and 10, and that took very hard work from a lot of people. It's really an outstanding achievement in the county. Indicators 4A and 4B are discipline of minority students. We have a way to go on that. We know it, we're working on it, and we'll continue to work on it. If we can look at indicator nine and 10, as we have done, and we can succeed in that, we can definitely succeed in the next thing, and we have strategies in place to do just that, Mrs. Jesse?
I hope so. I mean, my experience has been, nationally, when kids are learning at high levels, you really don't have behavior problem. I think it comes back to the learning, and I think there are students who have real serious problems, and, you know, I've worked with special ed and worked with your office, but again, we've got to look at why the discipline problems are with these students and that they're from a particular group of students, because I really didn't expect my husband to be at the podium tonight, so I don't want to respond to him in particular, we will talk later, but it breaks my heart, and I have to tell you that this milk carton thing has just stuck with him for months. It's like, "I'm going to the courthouse, I'm going to..." Because we've seen kids who have problems at the lower levels, and then you get to middle school, and when you look at it, I think if you look at a lot of these kids, you'll get back to literacy levels, academic engagement situations, so those kind of, there are schools throughout this nation where, there are 90/90/90 schools, where 90% are minorities, 90% are low-income, but a 90% pass rate. There are schools where kids are going to college, every child in the building is going to college in high-poverty areas, and so, that's my goal. And I think the superintendent and Mrs. Darlington, I think we're pretty much on the same track, we have the same goals, we just got to find a way to reach that. The other question I have for you, when did you start this program?
Which program? The Multi-Tier System of Intervention?
Your tier, multi-tier.
Okay, well, it's, actually, the title has morphed over time. When you and I worked together, it was called RTI.
I was asking you, did RTI become something else?
No, well, RTI was, you know, we were pretty unique in Prince William County when we brought response to intervention into the county. And Virginia as a state, VDOE, really didn't have a meeting of the minds between the behavioral piece and the instructional piece at their level. Again, Prince William County was one of the prompters to VDOE to say, "We need to look at RTI as something that we use throughout the Commonwealth, and that way, we can get some money to provide professional development." VDOE finally picked up the cudgel and decided they were going to move in that direction. They finally also decided that they were going to come back, become part of the National MTSS. So, it's just morphed from RTI to Virginia Tiered System of Intervention, and also to MTSS. I picked up an appreciation plaque for the superintendent relatively recently, because we were acknowledged as one of the forerunners in the state for implementing RTI, so I know that you and Joy...
Yeah, well, RTI is the nationally-recognized intervention plan, so I'm really glad to see that we're working on that. And how do you measure results? What type of results? How do you measure, how do you measure success? Your rubrics, and how do you do that?
Well, actually, it's sometimes one child at a time, but as I said when, at the beginning of the presentation, we recognize that most of the children are not going to need academic or behavioral support. So, the first thing we look at is good first instruction in the classroom. That's going to be more than enough for many children, but we then have to look at what we put in, in terms of a system, to look at the children who require the extra help. That way, we can actually look at perhaps changing the instruction in the classroom. We can also find a baseline for where the child is as far as reading is concerned, and develop a goal line with data points along that goal line. We can do exactly the same thing with behavior goals and data points. And we have worked with schools, and again, across the offices in the Department of Student Learning, to put that kind of system in place.
Yeah, and just for review, I don't want to take any more time, the two areas, you said there were four areas, and it's discipline, and what's the last one that you still need to work on?
4A and 4B. It's discipline of minority students overall, and discipline, basically, of given groups of children. So, that's all minorities, and then specific minorities.
Thank you.
But don't forget, we shine when it comes to nine and 10.
Thank you, Ms. Jesse. Any further discussion? Thank you.
Thank you.
All right, moving right along here to Item 1502, School Board Calendar. Do we have, are you guys going to present anything here, or, I'm asking because I don't know? I didn't want to jump ahead if you had something to show us, that's all.
It's on for action, but we're here to answer any questions or talk about anything related to the...
That's why, I knew there was an introduction of a different item, that's why I just wanted to make sure I wasn't jumping the gun and not giving you your opportunity, so. to make sure I wasn't jumping the gun and not giving you your opportunity, so. All right, do we have a, do we have a motion? We have a motion for the item 15.02.
Mr. Chairman.
Mr. Deutsch.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. I move that we adopt the hybrid proposal as proposed by Mr. Trenum.
Okay, I have to make a slight modification to what's already typed in here, Mr. Deutsch, I have it typed in, Mr. Deutsch, that the Prince William County School Board approved the 2017-2018 Annual School Calendar known as the Trenum Hybrid Calendar. Is that satisfactory?
Sounds good.
All right. Do I have a second for that motion?
Mr. Chairman, I'll second it.
Ms. Satterwhite, thank you.
Sorry, I'll second that motion.
Thank you. All right, discussion, Mr. Deutsch.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. In talking to people about the school calendar, there were, there's a number of good rationale for moving the calendar as early as possible to facilitate more time in advance of testing, in advance of the SOLs, et cetera, to increase learning opportunities. There's also been a lot of concerns with the way that the calendar, as originally proposed, that's the pre-Labor Day calendar, still ends early late, and so, there's a lot of concern on that front, so. My apologies, sorry. Anyway, really quick, starting pre-Labor Day helps for educational purposes, but starting as late as the pre-Labor Day option here has a number of, a lot of people in the community concerned about how late it is. Even the proposal that we have from staff says that the survey we had had 63% of people opposed to it. So Mr. Trenum's helps create a hybrid. It also addresses, in the best way possible, from these calendars, what the Electoral Board has brought forward, and hopefully really satisfies a lot more people, satisfies all the concerns on the table. I've talked to people who support both the pre and post-Labor Day calendar, and they're all a lot happier with this hybrid proposal, so I think it would be a good idea.
Thank you, Mr. Deutsch. If you don't mind, I probably do have a few questions, so you didn't come up for not, so you're welcome. I actually think all three of the proposed models have their, I'm sorry, Dr. Walts, did you have something?
I was just going to suggest that we put the slide up that has all three if we're considering those.
Is that what that was, is that what that motion, is that what that meant? All those, all those hand movements? Please, if we have a slide to put up, that would be, that would be great.
The comparison slide?
I don't have the ability to do that, although people probably think you do.
No.
There you go.
It's not in the, it's not part of this presentation. It was a single slide we gave them, yeah, it's the one page that Mrs. Satterwhite's holding up in her hand. It's, yes, there it is. Thank you, okay.
Look at this.
So.
World-class. World-class.
Mr. Sawyers, would it be helpful if I walked through what's on this slide?
Yes, thank you. Let's go there, and then I may have questions off of that. I don't promise that I won't have questions.
Sure, so, school, Mr. Sawyers, Mrs. Jessie, school board members, Dr. Walts, hello. This slide shows you the three options, and there's a lot of similarities between, among them. The first column shows you pre, the original pre-Labor Day option, and what we include are the places where there are differences. So the start date, winter break, fall, spring break, the end date, and the total number of days. So you can see all of those for the pre, original pre-Labor Day, the post-Labor Day, and Mr. Trenum's modified pre-Labor Day, AKA the hybrid option. It's a hybrid, not because of its start date, but because of the changes made to make a compromise so that the school year could be ending earlier, which is in response to questions and concerns. So in order to do that, you have to find days somewhere, and those days were found by shortening winter break by one day, which looks like the post-Labor Day option, hence the hybrid, by shortening spring break for students and teachers by one day, which, and shortening the school year overall by one day. So those are the things that it shares with the post-Labor Day option, it shares with the pre-Labor Day option, the start date, and then it gives you an end date of June 8th, which is a Friday.
Okay, and I actually remember the number that Mr. Deutsch cited earlier, and if I remember correctly, from the survey, it was basically that, if it was, it was kind of a cake, have your cake and eat it too, kind of vote, that the survey came out, which was, the survey came that people wanted post-Labor Day, but, but as early as, but early as well, is that right? So it was kind of both sides of it?
To be fair, the question, the yes, no, the, what was your preference question had 63% of the folks saying post-Labor Day option. The comments, and when we looked at those, a lot of folks who favored both options said, we want to get out as early as possible and have longer breaks. So that was just context, so people would like to, yeah, your cake and eat it too, but the question itself was pre or post, and the post-Labor Day option that was on the table got 63% of that vote.
Okay, and then the coming, the ending as early as possible was more of a comment?
Was in the comments, themes, but from people on both, in both, who'd answered either way to the yes, to the, which one you prefer.
So regardless of how they answered on pre or post, the idea was they still wanted out as early as possible?
Get out as early as possible, yes, sir.
So, okay, I find that as more as the common theme, then, okay.
Yes, sir.
Okay, that's, that's, that's the one part from the previous, and honestly, why I tend to lead towards what the motion is for, which is the June 8th, and there's lots of reasons for that, but I tend to lead towards the get out as early as possible side as well. Dr. Walts, you have something to add?
Along the lines of eat your cake, have your cake and eat it too.
Right.
Another thing they talked very strongly about was the two weeks at the winter holiday, which we've had a couple of those. So I just want to point out that the longest break on the longest options, pre or post, neither of those are two weeks. The modified is even one day less, so I just want to throw that in there as well.
Perfect. Just adding to it. How many days for what, Ms. Jessie? So let me, okay, that was the main question I had. So the breaks are basically the same that I see for winter break, other than the one day for the pre-Labor Day meeting as well. And then, how does, do we factor in how we're going to handle, first of all, the snow days, and I apologize if this is something that is off-subject, but the snow days, and ultimately, if we use the snow days, do we determine that ahead of time, or is that something that comes more, you know, as the snow comes, I guess?
Okay, so, yes and yes. Okay, so the first question is, we, if the state requires that we start, you approve a school calendar that has 180 days with a minimum of 990 hours of instruction. Any of the options you approve that are currently on the table, do that. Once you start losing time to weather, which happens almost every year, it happened a lot last year, we fall, but if you start a calendar with 180 or 181, pretty quickly you fall below that number of days, but we have a longer day than is the minimum requirement by the state. So we have, in a 180-day calendar, since that's the motion on the table, about 12 days' worth of time, okay? That sounds like a lot, but last year we closed 10 times and had some delays, so you get close to that. So we also build in that our traditional days have been, first is the President's Day holiday, and you say, well, that's really early. Well, if you really get hammered in December or January, you want to make that day up sooner during the year. The second day is the workday at the end of the third marking period, which would be April 16th of 2018. And the third day we always put on the calendar would be the day after school gets out, regardless of which of these options, it would be that next day that currently shows as a teacher workday. If heaven forbid you go beyond that, that's when it would come back to the board for any other decisions that could be made. In the past, time, additional time has been added to the day, and there have been days added to the calendar. We haven't had to do that, knock on wood, in a few years.
And the time, when you mentioned the time, that time is still added on, from when, two years ago, when we added time to the day?
Yes, sir.
That time is still on the school day, is that correct?
Yes.
And that's what builds up to give us approximately the 12 extra days that we have, based on longer days, but not actually scheduled, longer hours, not scheduled days, correct?
Yes, sir.
Thank you. Trying to wrap my head around it.
No, great job.
Appreciate you.
Great job.
Appreciate you teaching me. That's, those are the questions I have. I'll open it up to anyone else. Ms. Jessie.
Ms., Dr. Casada, I'm trying to understand the teacher workdays. In some, one of the calendars, it's, you know, the kids are out of school, right? Tell me on the three calendars, how many days teachers have to remain in the building?
Okay, so that's a great question, Mrs. Jessie. So in a 181-day calendar, let me preface it, our teachers, the majority of our teachers have a 195-day contract. So the school's in session for 181 days, they have 14 days, teachers have an additional 14 days of contract. Those are sprinkled throughout the year, there's some at the beginning. 181-day calendar, you end up with two days at the end of the year. In a 180-day calendar, as proposed in either the post-Labor Day or the, Mr. Trenum's option, which didn't formally address that, there were three days at the end of the calendar in order to make sure that you have the 195 days for the teacher contract.
I'm just, you know, I think I've been a principal too long, and my teachers, when the kids left, they want to go home. And I'm not sure, for three days, what are these teachers going to be doing in that building when kids are gone? Because I'm telling you, they pack up if they have to stay at night, so that they can come in maybe on Monday and check out. So it's, it just appears to be, and I don't mean this in a bad way, a punishment for teachers to have to remain three days and there are no children in the building. What do you guys see teachers doing for three days?
Dr. Walts?
When there are no children?
Two things. One was, part of what we discussed a lot, probably a decade ago, was the fact that we had little to no professional development days built into the calendar. So if you're going to vision something for the following year, or you're going to do a data analysis or something like that, that afforded perhaps a day to set aside to do that. And then typically, if people are packed up, we have allowed them to check out early. In fact, this past year, it was two days.
Question is, are we going to allow them to check out early, because by the end of school, they have checked out mentally? I'm just, I'm just dealing with the reality of what I've seen. I mean, they, that's the only time I tell you, where I say, be in the library at 2:05 to check out. They're down the hallway, because they're ready to go. So are we going to allow them to check out on one of those days? Are we going to have a plan for them to remain? I'm just wondering if there's some ways that teachers can go home.
Well, again, these are great things to be discussing before a decision is made. Another thing to keep in mind is when we talk about these snow days, because remember, if we have to add days or time, which we have had to do more than once, very, very painful. Like, most board members who have lived through that, that's one of the things they never forget, is how upset people are. So part of that, part of the reason that they were allowed to check out early this past year, the two days, was because we were okay with our snow time. We had enough minutes, and it worked out. So again, you know, if that were the same in the next year, I don't make that decision till close to the end of the year, and then we put it out there when we are reasonably confident that we either have no snow time to make up, or there's not going to be an early hurricane, or flood, or something else that causes a code red. So I would, I would have no reason not to continue doing something like that on at least one of the days.
I appreciate that, because I had an expression in my building, and the expression was that we're holding them against their will. And we're not going to get a lot of fruitful types of things. Would you say that, Mr. Wilk?
One year I watched Lincoln, a bunch of like, three-hour movies during my three days. And I had good test scores, everyone, by the way, so.
Thank you, Ms. Jessie. Any other, any, Ms. Satterwhite?
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. Dr. Casada, I just want to address a couple of things that have been out there in the public, and just try and straighten some things out. People have asked, why can't we just go to school Labor Day to Memorial Day? Is that because of state law, and can you explain that, please?
Okay, so we could technically, right, the state of Virginia requires school divisions to start after Labor Day, unless you meet some qualifications, which we've met because we've had some challenging winters. And as I said, gosh, about a month ago when we were here, we qualify for that for the next several years, based on our past experiences. So we could start after Labor Day. In order to end before Memorial Day, you still need the number of days and the number of hours, and when you factor in weekends and breaks that folks want, and holidays, you'd have to have very long school days to make that happen. So that, that's why, that's why we don't. It's that number of hours and number of days combination that you have. The later you start, the later you're going to finish, unless you do some trade-offs on holidays that would be unpopular.
I appreciate that, because I know that was in confusion with people, they didn't understand that that was something we have to deal with. So we have a requirement of 180 days that have to be on the calendar, so we've put that in place. If we fall below on minutes because of snow days, we're okay, because we set the 180 calendar, is that correct?
You have to approve a calendar with 180 days, so what you're doing now is approving it. If you have inclement weather, be it snow, or we've had floods, or we've had superstorm sandies, so we've had things in October, September, those are decisions that are made in an emergency situation. So that is not a change to the approved calendar, that's an emergency reaction. Making decisions upfront are approved calendar decisions. Does that make sense? So your approved calendar has to be 180 days. You can follow, fall below that should the need arise, and then that's why it's good that our school day is longer than the minimum required by the state, because it banks us extra time that reduces the likelihood of additional days being tacked on at the end of the year.
I appreciate that. And I've watched over the years, as a parent on the other side of the dais, and then here, I've watched over the years as we've gotten this process more refined and done a better job of preparing. You have done a better job of preparing with your committee, and I thank you for that, with the 10 minutes built in, with having the days in reserve, that if we have to, we use those days for extra days off. Your planning has been terrific. And, you know, the reason I think we're looking at the modified calendar is because there have been so many people say, okay, we're, if we start school pre-Labor Day a week early, why aren't we getting out earlier? And the trade-off is, yes, we lose a day at winter break, yes, we lose a day at spring break. But we've always had the allowances for families, that if you are taking an extended little, few days extra, let's not get too crazy here, but if you take a few days extra, if you send in the note for the pre-arranged absence and let your school know, we usually do approve that. And so that's always been our policy or regulation with Prince William County Schools. Am I correct, Dr. Walts?
Yes.
So that's, that's no different. And getting out June 8th, I mean, I can't remember ever doing that in Prince William County Schools. So sad thing is, I won't have any kids still in Prince William County Schools when this calendar is in effect, but it's pretty exciting still. And so I really do hope we pass this. The reason the board was very excited when we first had the option for the pre-Labor Day waiver is because it does give us that extra week that we have for education in the school year prior to SOLs, and it's not only SOLs also, that's an extra week at the beginning of the school year, prior to SATs, prior to ACTs. It's a time to get in that extra instruction, because if you have that time at the end of the school year, your testing's done. And this, I think, is the best benefit for kids. And what we're about is education, not just the vacations. We'll accommodate vacations, we've got to focus on the education, so thank you.
Thank you, Ms. Satterwhite. Anyone else? Mr. Brand. I almost said Trenum, and I apologize, Mr. Brand.
That's all right. Thank you, Chairman Sawyers. I guess I'm kind of looking at this from an ex-teacher perspective, and I was a teacher in the school system for seven years, and I really liked that June 8th date, because I know as someone who taught an SOL class every single year that I was a teacher, English 11, a lot of my students physically and mentally, as soon as SOLs were over, and probably me as well, we were done. We were checked out. We were ready for the school year to come to a close. So I think that's one reason I do find that June 8th date, end date, quite appealing, because, you know, from a school calendar perspective, it is nice to end earlier. I do have a question about the committee makeup, and I apologize, I wasn't up here on the, on September 7th, but when it comes to the committee makeup, I noticed there was an election board representative on the, as part of the group, and we had a couple gentlemen come up tonight and address that topic of election days, I think, for the fall and also for June of 2018. How did that factor into the decision-making? Because I know they were brought up tonight, but did they come up in your committee meetings as things to consider?
Yes, Mr. Forrest was at the committee meetings. I believe it was Mr. Forrest. He was at our committee meeting. So we've had an election representative as part of the committee, and those issues do come up and get discussed, and there's sometimes some vigorous dialogue about them, but the decisions have remained consistent with the way we've done practice for the November elections. So yes, he was, he was present at both calendar committee meetings.
Okay, thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Brand. Further discussion? Dr. Walts?
Thank you for calling on me so many times.
You're welcome, sir.
So one, one final note that hasn't come up in any of this is, the Building and Construction and Maintenance Department will be ecstatic if the modified plan goes through, because five days... five days onto the construction calendar is huge. If you take the potential days of all of our renovations and construction over the course of the summer, five days is a pretty big percentile. So if you choose that one.
Well, we're about to find out. So any further discussion on the matter? With that, I'll call the vote. I'm actually going to do this one here. Ms. Ralston, the motion on, I'm going to repeat the motion, that the Prince William County School Board approved the 2017-18 Annual School Calendar known as the Trenum Hybrid Calendar. Ms. Ralston, how do you vote?
Yes.
Mr. Brand?
Yes.
Ms. Jessie?
Yes.
Yes.
Ms. Satterwhite?
Yes.
Mr. Deutsch?
Aye.
Mr. Wilk?
Yes.
I too vote yes. Easier than I thought it would be. Shouldn't have to do it that I promise I click save. Ms. Irvin?
I can't see the votes because they still have that slide up. There we go. Thank you.
There it is.
The vote is seven yes, one absent Williams. Motion passed.
All right, moving right along. Thank you, Dr. Casada. Moving right along, we are on item 16.01, which is the legislative priorities. A motion is in order.
Mr. Chairman.
Ms. Satterwhite.
I move that the Prince William County School Board approve the legislative priorities for the 2017 legislative session.
Thank you. Do I have a second?
Mr. Chairman.
Ms. Ralston.
I second.
Thank you. Discussion. Ms. Satterwhite?
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. There was a change made, and I think Mr. Eamon mentioned that when we were here last time. Number seven was added, provide new funding with the standards of quality so that school divisions can staff for one nurse for every 750 students. It's my understanding there's going to be a statewide push with school nurses to push for that standard quality change, so that we do have a smaller caseload for our nurses than what we currently have. Also, I did see something recently with the Department of Education where they also are looking at adjusting the standards of quality for this. So I think this is a very good time to move that from our list of supports to our legislative priorities. And I appreciate everybody if we do support that. So thank you, Mr. Chairman.
Thank you, Ms. Satterwhite. Anyone else discussion on the legislative priorities? Well, with that, I'll call the vote. Those in favor of the motion, please signify yes by raising your right hand. Thank you.
The vote is seven yes, one absent Williams. Motion passed.
Moving on to Finance and Support Services, we have the proposed sale of VPSA bonds, Fall 2016. A motion is in order. 1701, yes, Ms. Jessie. Ms. Satterwhite?
Do you have to read the whole thing or say as recommended?
I believe you can say as recommended. I'm, I'm okay with, actually, I kind of want to tell you you have to read the whole thing, but I think, I think the whole board having it in front of them is fine with as recommended.
Mr. Chairman, I recommend that the Prince William County School Board approve the proposed sale of the VSBA bonds for the Fall 2016 sale as recommended.
Mr. Chairman, I second.
Thank you, Ms. Satterwhite. Mr. Ralston seconds. Discussion. Mr. Deutsch?
Thank you. I have a question. I, Mr. Klein's here. I have a process question real quick.
Sorry. Just so I understand what it is we're actually voting on here. At the very end of all the words in front of us, it says, "As a first step, the school board must request
board accounting supervisors submit an application consent to the issuance of the sale of bonds to VPSA." So are we just voting on requesting the BOCs, submit the application, and then we vote on actually approving, authorizing them later? Or what exactly are we doing here?
No, you, essentially, you are taking, I'm sorry, Mr. Chairman, members of the board, Dr. Waltz, you are, you are voting both stages of the process. And that is, it's a request to the board accounting supervisors to sell those bonds through the VPSA. And to the extent that that is approved by the VPSA, you are consenting to the issuance of such bonds.
Okay. So there's the one vote on all of these bonds here?
Thank you, Mr. Deutsch. Anyone else? Okay, with that, we'll call the vote. Those in favor of the motion, please signify yes by raising your right hand. Thank you.
The vote is seven yes, one absent Williams. Motion passed.
Moving on to superintendent's time, Dr. Waltz.
I would like to begin by reminding the board that I yielded my entire time at the last school board meeting. Well, first and foremost, I would like to welcome our newest school board member, Mr. Sean Brand. And had a good meeting with him yesterday, so we will work with you as we do with each of our board members. And welcome and thank you for your service. I'm pleased to announce that we have taken another step to give teachers more time to teach. This involves what's called the Orange Literacy Folder, that elementary teachers have been required to keep on their students. Based on teacher input, we have eliminated duplication in data collection, cut paperwork, and streamlined required assessments. As always, teachers will continue to assess students as needed, to diagnose and properly address their learning needs in reading and writing. And we are confident this approach will provide extra time for planning and good instruction. September 15th through October 15th is National Hispanic Heritage Month. During this month, our nation recognizes the valuable contributions of Hispanic Americans to our country's history. There are numerous events sponsored by the Northern Virginia Community College during this time. Check out the college's Global Learning Center website under News and Events for details. Our Second College Fair will take place on October 13th, 6:00 to 8:00 p.m. at Garfield High School. All juniors and seniors and their parents are encouraged to attend and explore post-graduation options. You will have a chance to meet representatives from colleges and universities, technical schools, and the military. October is Bullying Prevention Month. This observance reminds us that bullying of any type has no place in our schools or in the lives of anyone anywhere. Here in PWCS, we all work together as a team, students, employees, and parents to prevent it. The school board approved a resolution at its last meeting to recognize the importance of programs that encourage positive behaviors and discourage bullying behaviors. Among these programs is the widely acclaimed Rachel's Challenge. Earlier today, NBC4 reporters were at Parkside Middle School to cover that school's Rachel's Challenge Assembly. I would also like to remind parents and community members of a roundtable on bullying, which will occur tomorrow, Thursday, October 6th at 7:00 p.m. here in the Kelly Leadership Center. Courtney Berkey, a nationally known expert on bullying, will meet with parents to discuss subjects such as cyberbullying and ways to help students affected by bullying. Another important date and topic to note on your calendars is the Prince William County Police Department's Youth Services Bureau's presentation on social media and sexting on October 12th at Patriot High School. This presentation will take place from 7:00 to 10:00 p.m., and all students and parents are invited to attend. Now is the time to learn about the many middle school specialty programs that our school division offers. These are rigorous programs that help students acquire in-depth knowledge in a field of interest to them. Middle school information sessions will be held on October 10th and October 17th at the Kelly Leadership Center, and will cover math and science, world languages, and the International Baccalaureate Middle Years Program. The annual Great Southeast Shakeout will take place on Thursday, October 20th at 10:20 a.m. PWCS will participate in this multi-state earthquake drill. As a reminder, it was only five years ago that a 5.8 magnitude earthquake struck Virginia. Mrs. Lori Williams, our school board representative from the Woodbridge District, was recently elected to serve as chairman of the Joint Board for the Governor's School at Innovation Park for the 2016-17 academic year. She served as vice chairman last school year, and we offer our congratulations to Mrs. Williams. Now to student accomplishments. Congratulations on our 2016 National Merit semifinalists. Christopher Chi and Kimberly Zhang, who attend Battlefield High School, Cameron Phillips from Brentsville District High School, Christian Ellis and Tian Tian Lo, students at Woodbridge High School, and Gregory Bastian, Victoria Bavard, and Jonathan Buchinski, who are students at Thomas Jefferson High School for Science and Technology. Two Patriot High School marching band members, Ariana Najjar and Natalie Wong, have been selected for the United States All-American Marching Band. This band will perform at the U.S. All-American Bowl in San Antonio in January. Ariana will be the drum major, and Natalie will play the piccolo. The selection process was very rigorous, requiring audition videos, a written essay, and recommendations from the band director. Hats off to Patriot Director of Bands, Mr. David Van Gelder, for his work with these talented musicians. And in closing, I am extremely proud to announce that a record number of PWCS students graduated on time last school year. Our new 2016 on-time graduation rate is 91.8%, which continues a steady climb from 83% eight years ago, and again outpaces the statewide results. This kind of success can only be achieved because of the important work that begins in our elementary schools, continues through our middle schools, and culminates at the high schools. On behalf of the administrative leadership team and the school board, I thank and congratulate all of our 11,000 employees for their outstanding work as we strive together to provide a world-class education. Thank you.
Thank you, Dr. Waltz. Moving on to item 1901, Mr. Deutsch, this is your special education advisory committee appointment.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. I move that the Prince William County School Board approve the appointment of Charles Ronco to represent Coles District for the Special Education Advisory Committee for a period of two years.
And I will second that motion. Mr. Deutsch, do you have any, do you want to discuss it?
He is a very smart math teacher in the county with a interest in special education. I look forward to seeing the work he does.
Any further discussion? I know Mr. Ronco as well. I know he's passionate about what he does, and I think this is a great appointment, and so I'm happy to support him. Anything else? Those in favor of the motion, please signify yes by raising your right hand. Thank you.
The vote is seven yes, one absent Williams. Motion passed.
Moving right along to 19.02, the LGBTQ Task Force. Ms. Jessie?
This mic is too far away. I'm recommending that the Prince William County School Board develop a task force for the LBGQ. Since last week, we had, the last meeting, we discussed this. And I guess I'm just making, recommending that. And can I, at this time, discuss my rationale?
Yeah, yes.
Absolutely. This is, this is on for information, but you, you can absolutely do that.
First of all, I, I think that our school system's job is to provide educational access and safe learning environment for all students, including transgender students. I know there are some legal considerations. The idea is not to discriminate against students based on their transgender, transgender status. It's one that needs to be addressed and one that I fully support. So in doing my research, I think that it was important for me to go back and obtain guidance. And my guidance comes from the National School Board Association, who said in April of 2016, that we should do two things, because it's such a sensitive and complex issue. One, we should engage our communities in policies and procedures to ensure access to education while reflecting on the communities' concerns and values. I know there were people here who said things that were very hurtful. There were people who came and shared their hearts. It was a very difficult thing to do. But I think the issue was, it wasn't actually the policy itself. It was the support of the policy and how it was going to be implemented. And that's why I recommend a task force that would be under direction of the division superintendent. Secondly, the National School Board Association recommends that we need to know that the superintendent and his staff are ready, and that we are involving other people, and seek to reconcile some, sometimes deeply conflicting community views that, and legal imperatives that comes with this issue. I know that at the last board meeting, I remember Ms. Satterwhite mentioning it. And I've chatted with other school board members, and chatted with some other people in that community. I have chat, talked with Dr. Waltz, and asked him whether or not he would be willing to form that task force. He has indicated that he's willing to do that, and to perhaps bring back a report after the first of the year. The formulation of that task force should include community members. It should include teachers who deal with these students, parents, and members of the community itself. I think that, we say we haven't gotten any reports, but we haven't gotten reports because it's not something that's very popular to do. So I'm hoping that, I call it the Goldilocks formula. I know we can't all have this just right thing, and I know that there are going to be people who differ. But we have a safety committee. We have a special education committee. Last night, I was at Woodbridge as we talked about a new school. And I just want to commend Mr. Klein and his staff, because some of the ideas that came out last night, I was thinking, whoa, I don't know if that's really a good idea. And they were just so nice. Well, we'll consider that. People just want to know that they're heard. And so I think the way it was done, not the recommendation itself, is something that we, I would like to see us readjust. Mr. Chairman?
Thank you, Ms. Jessie. Ms. Ralston?
I think I'll second that, because it hasn't been seconded.
There's no motion on the floor. This is only on for information.
Oh, information only, okay. I agree with you on this, Ms. Jessie. When I listened two weeks ago, and even two weeks before that, it was just how angry people were. And I think you can drum up people against an ant, if you phrase it correctly. It doesn't mean that ant's going to bite you. It just means that you figured out the correct words to hit the right buttons. So I think that this is a great idea. I look forward to it. I look forward to you doing this, and I'd like an opportunity to at least put a person on there, if you don't mind, and if that's how you're going to do it, Dr. Waltz. If not, let me know. Because I can think of at least one or two people. So I do look forward to it. I think it's a great idea.
Thank you, Ms. Ralston. Any further discussion? Mr. Deutsch?
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. I guess I'm still concerned with what we're doing here, and also kind of the, the priorities of the school board right now. Just like the school division does every year, we gave the superintendent a list of priorities for what we wanted him to focus on for the year. And so far, there hasn't been a lot of follow-through from the board on facilitating, making sure that those goals happen. Right now, we're talking about creating another task force, which will consume a fair bit of time and a fair bit of energy from the superintendent, both in formulating, executing, reporting, et cetera. And we need to make sure that the priorities we already have established are what we push forward and put our resources towards, so that we truly improve things. As we pile more things on the superintendent's plate, it's going to be very hard for him to accomplish things we already have said we want him to accomplish. I'm also very nervous about the way that we are going forward on something where we know the legal landscape -- may change under us in a couple months. So, we come forward with a bunch of proposals. If we get a report in January, so maybe we have proposals in February or March we vote on, and then we have rulings about three months later that maybe change things up. Then we have to almost go back to the drawing board, because then we have to meet with people in light of what the actual legal landscape is. So, I think it's a matter of us continuing to prioritize what we've already said we would prioritize, not continuing to burden staff, and make sure we make effective proposals based on the actual legal landscape after it settles. I think that would be more prudent if we continue to focus on education here.
Dr. Waltz.
Again, I can defer to Vice Chairman Jessie, but my understanding from our conversations was that in January, we wouldn't have a task force put together with completed work, but that in January, I would bring back to the board a framework for a task force that would involve community input and so forth for you folks to react to, and see if we have five or more board members who believe this is the right path. So, the initial work would be done by an administrative team to carve out a timeline and how that might work to present to the board in January.
Thank you, Dr. Waltz. Ms. Jessie.
I just wanted to say that he is correct. I wanted to make sure we have ample input. When the legal decision comes down, we're going to have to react to the legal decision, but in some way, and I'm not sure how, depending on how it's worded, we've got to find a way to be fair to all members of this community, and that includes transgender. What we do as a school board, we're not going to violate the law, but I think to just sit and to hold our hands, and because people were saying, we had no input, we don't know, many people don't know the difference. There's an education process, too, but I'm not asking that you formulate some big committee that's going to, we're going to have to have a major vote, but we can at least begin the process of selecting members, establishing a framework. So, because we say that the reported, the decision is going to be back in two months, we don't know that. What happens if all those people, the people tonight, for example, who came here, and the courts decide to wait a year, or two years? What do they do? What do we as a board say to them that, well, we're waiting two years before we even formulate any ideas of how we can create equity for all the people in our school system? That's, that's my concern. And Dr. Waltz, I wanted to also say that because there was not a lot of opportunity for input, Dr. Waltz and his staff have been doing quite a bit of work in this area, and nobody knew about it. I was talking to one principal, and she said, well, we had this meeting, and we were talking about, you know, this, this, this concept and the sensitivity. There's a lot of work that's been done behind the scenes already, and some of that work, we can augment, modify, or adjust, but we do, the people who are involved, the transgender community, has a right to at least have their voices heard in some systematic and professional manner. They should not have to come before this board and stand up, and then by some, be ridiculed because of who they are. So, that's, that's basically my.
Thank, thank you, Ms. Jessie. Ms. Satterwhite.
Thank you, Ms. Chairman. Ms. Jessie and Dr. Waltz, I'm glad that you guys have met on this, excuse me, you guys, this sounds really informal. I'm glad that the two of you have met on this and discussed it, and it was on September 7th. I mentioned the need for a task force because we had not had these discussions in the community. I mentioned it again last meeting, and I'm really glad that you've met and had this discussion. Dr. Waltz, I appreciate what you've just laid out about bringing us a framework for a task force. You know, we know that in Fairfax County, they've pretty much stopped everything right now as they're waiting for things to play out with the courts. Someone referenced tonight my long list of questions that I presented on September 7th, and when we're here on this board, we have to think through implications whenever we pass something. We do a tremendous amount of research when we're on this board, and it's our responsibility. We have to do these things, just on calendar, which should be easy. We spend a tremendous amount of time on, and this isn't something that's easy, and we have to, we have to work together to bring people in our community together. And, Dr. Waltz, I, I definitely would like to see you put together a task force and that would look at some of these things that have been talked about on the entire issue, and then bring us together some recommendations, incorporating what we hear, hopefully from, well, we know that we'll hear at least from one of the courts next year. And I think this is a good thing. I mean, a lot of people who have spoken from different aspects have volunteered their services, and I, I know that you have professionals on staff who are constantly working with our members of the community, and I know you can put together a good task force, as you've done in the past with sensitive issues, and bring us some good answers. So, I am looking forward to this. One thing I would say is that we also want to be sensitive in how the task force is named, because we want to be sensitive to everybody in the community. So, we like to on this board to put things in your lap that are difficult and say, fix it. So, you know, thank you very, so, thank you very much, Ms. Jessie, for bringing this forward, Dr. Waltz, for taking this on for us, and assuming that we approve this. Thank you.
And I'll, I'll just be very brief. I'm sorry, Mr., I'm sorry, Mr. Wilk, go ahead. You had your mic on before I did. Mr. Wilk.
No, it's okay. I, I, I just want to, again, Ms. Satterwhite said it very succinctly, mostly what I was going to say, the need for this task force, you know, at the end of what I was saying two weeks ago, would be calling for the task force, and I commend you, Ms. Jessie, for putting this forward. I think this is very important. You know, I would remind Mr. Deutsch that, you know, people from both sides of the aisle were calling for the need to have the conversation out there in the audience, and I think it's important, and we do this in a, you know, bipartisan, red, blue, purple manner, you know, and we see this happening all across the country, you know, in conservative communities, in liberal communities, in moderate communities. I think the discussion needs to be had, and we need to have some type of framework in place, and the educational opportunity, like you were saying, Ms. Jessie. I just think it's very important, and I support this idea.
Thank you, Mr. Deutsch, or, Mr. Wilk, excuse me.
Yeah, I think it's important as well, you know, to Mr. Deutsch's point about focusing on education and things like that. I think, you know, there's obviously basic needs that need to be met in order for the education to take root, that we're providing these children, safety, a basic level, you know, they have to come in not starving every day. We want to make sure they have food in their belly so they can take advantage of education, clothes on their back, those types of basic needs, because a, a student or employee, for that matter, that, that's uncomfortable or unsafe in their environment ultimately doesn't get the most out of their education. And so, I certainly agree with focusing on education, but we have to make sure, as I look down the rest of our agenda and see, you know, our last three items have nothing to do with education, that, you know, that we focus on those things, but it's, it's important that, that, that basic needs are met in order to, in order to take advantage of the education that we do provide our children. So, that's why, although ultimately, obviously, I wish things would happen faster. At the same time, I'm willing to walk down the road and make sure that we, we at least move and start having the conversation as well. So, thank you. Mr. Brand.
During the very lengthy school board meeting last time, I, I wasn't up here, but I did have the opportunity to, to walk out in the lobby a couple times, and one of the things that oppressed me, and Danica, I'm going to point you out, was I, I did see you talking to a gentleman who I believe was one of the ministers for a very long time, and I was impressed by that. I saw two people that were from different sides of the aisle, and I'll use Mr. Wilk's term, definitely on this topic, but the two of you appeared to be engaged in a very civil discussion, and seemed to be listening to each other for, for well over an hour plus. That impressed me, and it, it just made me think that a task force, the idea of a task force definitely has merit, because people, even if they disagree on topics, even if they don't see eye to eye, they can get in the same room, and they can talk to each other, and they can communicate with each other, and they can treat each other with respect, and they can be civil. I like the timeline that Dr. Waltz mentioned tonight. I think that's a good thing. I, I don't think we should rush this. I, I kind of agree with a couple other folks up here that have pointed out, you know, there will be court cases either at the state level or definitely at the national level that give us some guidance on this. But getting started with talking and discussions and communicating is never a negative thing, so I, I definitely think it has merit.
Thank you, Mr. Brand. I think that gave everybody a shot. So, we'll move on to the next item, which is item 19.03, Improvement: Advanced Placement Scores for All Students Presentation. Ms. Ralston, this is on as yours, but I believe Mr. Mulgrew will be coming to the podium.
Thank you. Yes. You know, I'm trying to look at this one and see what I, I have had so many things on, and they've all come finally at this time. Yes, please, I, I deserve that hand clap. Thank you, Ms. Satterwhite. Mr. Mulgrew will tell us all about it. Thank you.
Thank you. Good evening, Chairman Sawyers, members of the school board, and Dr. Waltz. Tonight's presentation is at the request of Ms. Ralston. I'd also like to thank Ms. Satterwhite for assisting me in Boston with this presentation at the National School Board Conference this past April. Tonight's presentation is called Improving Advanced Placement Students: Advanced Placement Programs for All Students. Ten years ago, the school, the school board challenged the superintendent to increase access to advanced placement, international baccalaureate, and Cambridge classes. The key was to increase access to all students, but still maintain high pass rates for students. At that time, only about 17 percent of students nationwide graduated having passed an advanced exam. The superintendent wanted to double that average. The school board and the superintendent agreed on this vision and changed its strategic plan to reflect the percentage of Prince William County graduates who pass an advanced exam. There were three actions taken by the school division to complete the task. One of the first actions was to present the research conducted by John Hattie. All the instructional techniques listed on the left-hand side were found to have positive effects. However, Prince William County High Schools focused on three of the instructional techniques that were found to have some of the highest impacts on student achievement. These three instructional techniques, teacher-student relationships, feedback, and the self-reporting of grades by students, were identified to have some of the highest impacts. The second action was to analyze the research conducted by Hanover Research. Dr. Casada, our Director of Accountability, routinely shares best practices identified by Hanover Research. Hanover identifies the following actions. Schools should effectively use the PSAT test given each October to both sophomores and juniors. The school board agreed and continues to fund this for our students. Using the PSAT scores, effectively utilize the AP potential reports to increase enrollment. The school board agreed and continues to pay for all advanced tests. Increased in professional development for teachers, remove the inhibitors from advanced coursework participation, and emphasis should definitely be given at the lower levels, the pre-AP situations. The PSAT test is given in October. Traditionally, the results of the test come back to the school in mid-December. Depending on how a student scores on the PSAT, counselors can identify students who have been identified by the college board as having AP potential. Prince William County also uses the AP expectancy table to increase student access. Let me see if I can get the mouse. This is based on a national probabilities. Ninety percent of students who score a 67, if you can follow the error, or higher on the math portion of their PSAT, not nationwide, students who have 67 or higher, 90 percent pass the calculus test two years later. If they have a 64 through a 66, 80 percent of them pass two years later when they take calculus. By the way, we're speaking of calculus AB, not BC, just a semester's worth of college calculus. 58 to 60, that student has a 60 percent probability. This is based on national statistics provided by the college board. I'd like you to bring to your attention, to, your attention to students whose PSAT scores are around 50 or below. If a student had a 50, somewhere between 49 and 51, nationwide, only about 30 percent of those students end up passing the calculus test two years later. If they're below it, at a 47 to a 48, obviously, that number goes down. It's at 20 percent. If they're below 43, it's just a 10 percent proficiency. Here's Prince William County's, these are actual students from the 2014 cohort. This student, 50, which means he only had a 30 percent probability of passing the test. Passing the test means he only got a three. This student got a perfect score. This would be accepted, this AP score, at Harvard. This 50, another one, perfect score, five. This 50, perfect score, five. A 54 for student D, perfect score, five. Way down here, you have a student with a 44. That is a three on the calculus test, which almost guarantees college acceptance and college credit at most universities. There are some that will advocate for a four. These are outstanding. These are students actually who far exceeded what their probabilities were two years later. Overall, how did our division do? Now, I'm going to make sure I say this to Mr. Wilk, Mr. Brand, and, and Ms. Ralston as well. This is just advanced placement. You have Cambridge tests. Mr. Brand, you have IB tests at Stonewall, and the same there. We just, the, the college board gives advanced placement, okay? Right here, students who had a 10 percent probability, we did not do very well. We had five students overall in calculus, but zero passed. But look at the students who only had a 20 percent probability. We doubled the national average at 43.8. Students had a 30 percent probability of passing. This is not a high score on the PSAT. 60 percent passed. If we had a 40 percent, we were at 47. 50, we were at 62. 60, we were at 70. At the 70 percent mark, we were at 67 percent. 80 percent mark nationally, we were at 90, and at 90 percent, we were basically 90. What I would like to try to bring to the board's attention is that, in short, there were 260 students who took the calculus AB test in 2014. I have highlighted the fact that two-thirds of those students, highlighted in red, 154 of the 260 were students who probably would have never taken the course 10 years earlier. They wouldn't have been enrolled, much less getting fives, or fours, or threes. We have greatly expanded the opportunity for our students. It is significant in the fact, I'm sorry, I apologize, the lessons that we have learned. Collaboration between the school board and the superintendent is very important in promoting student achievement in advanced placement. I'd like to personally thank you, and the previous board as well, for your support on this initiative over the last couple of years. Sometimes you print out, and I, I fund PSAT. I want to tell you, this is the reason why you do that. Provide indicators or goals in the strategic plan that benefit the desired effect. I think by switching from the percentage of students who pass an AP test to the percentage of our graduates, we have greatly expanded AP enrollment and proficiency. Programs to improve advanced placement success work best with other programs or initiatives. It's comprehensive. It's everybody pitching in. In Prince William County, we have discovered keeping lanes open for advanced placement students is important. Many students did much better than their PSAT indicators would have projected. What we've learned a little bit is, in this case, math and advanced placement might be a marathon. You might not be ahead at the math, at the halfway point, at the 13-mile mark, or in sixth grade, but many of our students are sprinting at the end of it in ninth, 10th, 11th, and 12th, and are doing exceptional work. The results, Prince William County now has roughly 33 percent of its seniors graduating having passed an advanced placement, international baccalaureate, or Cambridge exam. SAT scores have risen 17 points over the last few years, with more students taking the test, and the percentage of socioeconomic students rising during that time. Prince William County on-time graduation rate is 91- Prince William County on-time graduation rate is 91.4. At the time that I made the slide and that we presented this, it was 91.4. The on-time graduation rate came out. As Dr. Walts eloquently said, it's now 91.8. So this slide is incorrect, because now it's the highest in the history of our county. And at the time that this was written, it was the seventh-highest among the 50 largest school districts. And this is the one that I'm most proud of. Prince William County has been honored twice in the past three years by the College Board with honor roll status for its success in raising Advanced Placement access and scores to underrepresented groups. To my knowledge, no other jurisdiction in Northern Virginia has gotten it once. Again, I'd like to thank you for your support.
Thank you. Ms. Ralston?
Thank you very much. This evening, I hope that, for those who are still here or may be watching this, you've had an opportunity to hear about our students from Title I to special education to Advanced placements. It shows that good things are truly happening here. Each child is being educated to the highest of their potential, and it's an excellent staff, excellent staff, that'll take the time and look at our kids and say, yes, they can. Thank you very much.
Thank you, Ms. Ralston. Anyone else? Ms. Jessie?
I've got to get closer to my mic. I'm sorry. I want to also thank you, and, you know, I look at a lot of data, and the SAT scores, I think, is a discussion that can't be had tonight. I'd rather, down the road, chat with you about talking about our SAT scores. There are some areas that I think we really need to improve in, but first, I want to congratulate you for this. But down the road, I'd like to look at that. I talked to Jennifer today and wanted to talk about the percent of Virginia Public Schools meeting the college readiness benchmark, because at the end of the day, because I've been checking on that to say, well, when our kids graduate, what happens? Are they graduating with the scores that they need in order to move on to that college level? And Jennifer, Ms. Dr. Casada, said that scores on the college readiness benchmark is not available. We don't have that now. Because at a state level, Governor...well, Ms. Doctor Ann Holton, who is now Mrs. Kane, who is running for the...had written in the last Virginia VDO News that we have chronic gaps in the number of kids, 45% at the state level, that can move on to college at...and the likelihood of getting a B, receiving a B-minus average during the first year. So it's just, as I read it over and over in this afternoon, as I read it, I thought, you know, this is just too much information. So I'd like to get with you, and so we can chat about that, because at the end of the day, it's about our kids being ready for college. But also, if we have a percentage of kids who are not going to be ready to be successful in college, it comes back to me that, you know, I've been on the sport for a while, and I'm beginning to refocus my energies on the fact that our kids need to leave the school system either career or college-ready. And so as we look at this college readiness, we really need to have an alternate program for kids for career readiness. When our kids walk out of the school system, and they don't get a job, or they're not going to college, it's just an accident waiting to happen, and we're talking about that, you know, that pipeline situation. I think it starts with us. And my husband said this, but I've always been a person that said, and many people at high-performing school systems, their edict is, it's not the parents' job to teach their kids, it's our job to teach their kids. And their job is to support learning. My husband was talking about his background. I happened to get this ancestry thing to do, and we were doing it last night, and I knew that my parents were not very literate. And last night, for the first time, I realized that my mother had a fifth-grade education. So this whole thing of her being involved with me was not going to happen. The school, it's the school's job, and that's what I want to say to Dr. Walts. It's our job, parent support, but it's our responsibility to get these kids out of here and get them ready for college or into a career. Thank you very much.
No, thank you.
Thank you, Ms. Jessie. Any further discussion? Mr. Deutsch?
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. So as I look at the first slide, it says that our goal is to double the 17% of students who are graduating with an advanced exam. We've hit 33%. Are we roughly saying we've hit our goal?
Doubling would be 34%.
Essentially, we've...
At the time that he did that, it would be, which means I have to go back and find another 60 kids out of this graduation cohort. I'm just looking for 60 more children to take an Advanced Placement class in their area of interest. And if we can get those 60 over the hump, we'll hit 34%. To get to 35, it's another 60. That's how we look at it, very much. Can I go through this school system and find 60 kids that we have yet to paint on their canvas? We know they're good, but for some reason, we haven't identified and given them the confidence? I think we can. That's how we got from 31 to 32 to 33. It's 60.
So we're essentially, we're pretty darned close. We've essentially hit our goal. Is that fair?
I would say that.
We're basically there.
But, I mean, ultimately, if we were a state unto ourselves, Prince William County, we would be the number-one state in the United States, because Maryland, I think, was at 31.5, 32% if Jennifer's still here. If we were ourselves, a state, just with the 500,000 people we have, we would be the number-one jurisdiction as far as the equity and excellence rating coming out.
Then, why doesn't dual enrollment fall under these types of classes? Because it gets students college credit, it's just as good a college credit as an AP or another type of test. Why aren't we, you know, including that in terms of what we're pushing students to do?
We can certainly do that, Mr. Wilk...Mr. Deutsch, I just have to tell you, at the time we began this, several years ago, we began with the AP potential report and everything that Ms. Jennifer Casada gave us as far as Advanced Placement. I would agree with you that if a student takes a dual enrollment course, I would count that as somebody, but at the time, we didn't include that measure. We certainly could go forward and do that.
Do we have kind of targets and benchmarks for what we're trying to hit for the number of students who take a dual enrollment class?
We have not done that as of yet. I've been more focused on IB, Cambridge, and Advanced Placement, but we certainly can look at that.
Yeah, I mean, you know, students take the tests that work for them, you know, and get the college credit that works for them. I just want to make sure we're not having the trio competing against the dual enrollment. So we're encouraging people to do all four and what works best for them versus...
There are certain students...
You know, we see one of the other three is better than dual enrollment or anything like that.
Yeah, there are certain places. Mr. Wilk has a very successful welding class at Potomac. They get dual enrollment credit. It's an outstanding program. I was there today. I did not count those students in this, because I didn't have an AP expectancy to show the growth from 10th till 12th, but we can certainly work on that.
Very cool. Thank you, Mr. Deutsch. Anyone else? Thank you.
Thank you.
What's next?
Moving...your mic's on.
I'm sorry?
Your mic's on. You're welcome. Moving on to item 19.04. It's an action item. Mr. Deutsch?
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. I moved that to Prince William County School...I moved that to Prince William County School Board to approve the revisions, Policy 137, polling of Prince William County School Board.
Thank you, Mr. Deutsch. Do we have a second?
Mr. Chairman, I second.
Ms. Ralston, thank you. Discussion. Mr. Deutsch?
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. This item is a continuance, actually, from before the summer, where we had it on for an info item at the end of the summer. This is a policy that a number of people worked together on revising towards the end of the spring. Essentially, the main thing it does is make sure that we have written in that the superintendent and Division Counsel is consulted before we move forward with a board poll. I think it's a prudent and helpful measure, and hopefully it'll help us as we conduct business and hopefully vote to approve this. Thank you.
Any further discussion? I'll briefly say, I worked with Mr. Trenum on this, so we had a couple of different versions kind of floating around several months ago. I don't necessarily see it as seeking approval from the superintendent or council, but they need...they're part of it...there's lots of changes to it, but part of it being informed. And I think ultimately, you could nitpick several different versions of what we had going on, but I'm satisfied with the version that we have moving forward. I mean, you could sit here and pick it apart, a couple of words here, a couple of words there, but I don't think that's completely necessary. So, you know, if the big thing is that the council and the superintendent be advised of any board polls, that's fine. We do want to be careful as a school board that we don't abdicate ultimately our authority to the superintendent or to legal counsel, but, you know, keeping them informed of what we're doing is certainly not a concern, not a concern that they're involved in that. Anyone else? With that, I'll call the vote. Those in favor of the motion, please signify yes by raising your right hand. Thank you.
Vote a seven yes, one absent Williams. Motion passed.
Okay, and this is item 19.05, designation of the Division Counsel, Ms. Mary McGowan, as the official School Board Parliamentarian. Mr. Deutsch, this is your item. On for information.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. This was also an item brought forward by Mr. Trenum, requested actually at the very last board meeting before the summer. I think the essence of what is being requested is that we have a parliamentarian to assist us as we move forward. And so I think that that's why we've brought it forward, is to make sure that the School Board has a parliamentarian. At the time, Division Counsel was considered a natural fit. There's been some discussion as to potentially hiring an outside parliamentarian. I think the essence is to make sure that we have one.
Any other discussion? Briefly, I'll chime in here, well, maybe not as briefly, but just a few points I want to make, is I think ultimately, if we kind of follow...this has seemed to become an issue recently, you know, as obviously, running for chair, it's my job, or when I ran for chair, I knew it meant my job, and if I won, to ultimately be the parliamentarian essentially before the board. In my studying of it, one of the first things they say is that even the best-laid parliament... the best-trained parliamentarians will mess up occasionally. With that being said, I obviously have some concerns with legal counsel also being the parliamentarian. Mary, what would be your approach to being the...sorry, Ms. McGowan, I apologize. What would be your approach to being the parliamentarian?
Mr. Chairman, I've discussed this with several board members. It was not my idea to be the parliamentarian, and my major concern is that, as the legal counsel, I'm counsel to the entire board, and I try very hard not to remain impartial to any of the particular issues that are before the board and to maintain that neutrality. The current motion or proposal, which would have me not just be the parliamentarian, but also be the final vote on the parliamentarian, I think is ill-advised to the extent that it would inject me as a voter, and I have a non-voting role. I'm not a member of this board. Under Roberts rules, the customary role for a parliamentarian is to be an advisor to the board, to offer advice, which the chair can either ignore or accept. And under the current Robert rules, which we've adopted, this board has adopted, if there's a disagreement with the chairman's call, then the board has the ability to overrule that call. So I think you have a mechanism here, if the board chooses to exercise it themselves. I would prefer not to be the parliamentarian for those reasons, but if the board decides that you...that a majority of you want me to be the parliamentarian, I would strongly, strongly request that it only be in an advisory capacity. I have served previous boards in an advisory capacity over the years, even before Dr. Walts came here, on the occasional need for an opinion on how Roberts applied.
Thank you, Ms. McGowan. Ultimately, I think the real issue here, to bring that this has been brought up, is really comes from a lack of communication, you know, reading through other, even other boards and how they handle amended motions, those types of things. Fairfax County, for example, just to pull one out. Fairfax County ultimately says that, you know, any planned amendments to the motion need to be told to the rest of the board two days ahead of time. And so it ultimately gives the board a chance to function more smoothly and properly at the time, as opposed to having surprise amended motions, like we even saw at our last school board meeting, coming up and just being put out there without having more than a few seconds to kind of understand what was going on. So this is kind of standard policy ahead of time. So the reality...I mean, things have happened until this became a subject. You know, Ms. Satterwhite had gotten a hold of me one time when she pulled something off the consent agenda. Ms. Williams wanted to add something to the closed session agenda one time, and she told me ahead of time she was going to do that. So whether or not I agree or disagree personally as the chairman wasn't really in play. The fact is that these other items that have come forward ultimately were brought up ahead of time, so we knew they were coming and that we could plan accordingly. So I think the reality is, spending money on a parliamentarian to come in and be the parliamentarian isn't necessarily something that we need to do. I think ultimately, this can be resolved simply by better communication amongst the board as far as planning when it comes in. The reality is, is that the board, before I came on, also had violations of Robert Rules of Order. Friendly amendments were allowed to happen on a regular basis, which are forbidden by Robert Rules of Order. Members spoke against their own motion. You can vote against your own motion, but according to Robert Rules of Order, you cannot speak against your own motion. That had happened at previous board meetings before I came on the board as well. So previous boards weren't perfect with Robert Rules either, and I certainly won't claim to be, but they are certainly something that I think with proper communication amongst the board, this step isn't necessary, and we can avoid, you know, more confusion on the board when we communicate any intended changes to the plan or amended motions coming forward out of what's on the agenda. So that's my take on it, and I appreciate that. Anybody else want to chime in on this? Ms. Ralston?
I have given this a lot of thought, more than I think it rightfully deserved. And I was wondering why I was really trying to stick with it, because I believe in a separate parliamentarian. It just came down that easy for me. And I think that, no matter how it works for you, Mr. Chairman, and you set your rules, you do what you do as the chairperson, but I watched you actually told a member that they were out of order, and they couldn't make a motion. Now, I don't profess to know too much, other than what I read about parliamentary rules, and I carry the little book with me. And so that told me something then. And as time moves on, I think that maybe we won't have to have them, this person being paid, meeting after meeting. But to me, I will feel a whole lot more comfortable if...and you still have the opportunity to overrule that person, but I still feel, personally feel, a lot more comfortable if we had someone. Thank you.
Thank you, Ms. Ralston. Anyone else? Ms. Satterwhite?
Thank you, Ms. Chairman. Ms. Ralston, you referenced having possibly a paid parliamentarian. Do you have a company in mind?
There's the National Association, but I was going to ask Ms. McGowan if she would contact them, the National Association of Parliamentarians. I don't know what they charge, from a little to a lot. We're not looking for someone that was, you know, that's charging hundreds and hundreds of dollars.
And that would be my request of Ms. McGowan or Dr. Walts with the approval of the board, if we could find out before the next meeting what the cost would be, so that we would have that in front of us when we make a decision.
Right.
I think that would be helpful. You know, I also would like to have an outside parliamentarian. As Ms. Ralston said, the chairman would still have the opportunity to make the final call. I think that would actually keep things more even with all of us, and right now, we need that. And as Ms. Ralston said, it might only be for a little while, and I can respect that. So, and I understand Ms. McGowan's concerns. I also respect her opinion in wanting to remain impartial and be just our legal representative. So I am interested in Ms. Ralston's proposal.
Thank you, Ms. Satterwhite. Anyone else? Well, let's make sure no one else wants to go first before Mr. Deutsch goes second. Anyone else wants to go again? Ms. Jessie?
I, too, have given this a great deal of thought. I wasn't sure if this was something that...we've had some very difficult kinds of situations happen on the... happen on this board. In fact, I was at a, I was a panelist on a committee, and the topic was budget, and, you know, we talked about budget, and we talked about infrastructure and board of supervisors, and the audience had questions. And the audience, the last question was pretty much, why are you guys so pretty much dysfunctional? And, which sort of caught me by surprise, but I said that we were in the middle of a transition, and we are, but I know there's been discussion about the school system and who we represent. We've had several issues on this board. Now, let me just say this. I've been in community organizations, I don't know, 30 years or 40 years, really. I have been a member of my sorority for many, many years in various organizations, and every organization that I've ever been a part of has a parliamentarian. But the parliamentarian in those organizations are usually an internal person. So I would see that we would look at an outside person, maybe until we all felt a little bit more comfortable. However, when I went to the training for the vice chair at Virginia Board of Education, I have an entire packet of information that was presented. We spent an hour or two just on parliamentarian procedure, and they talked about how important it was. So I'm not suggesting that I be the parliamentarian, by no means, it's not my thing. But I'm just wondering if either that particular organization that has this, and I had his card, but I do have the information, who does parliamentarian types of activities for, just for school boards, because it's just so important as we're going through this learning process ourselves. And it may be that at some point, through some preliminary training, that a member of this board could act as the parliamentarian. I tell you, in my sorority, we have a tough little lady who's a parliamentarian. I mean, she walks up and down that aisle and say, you're talking, which is usually me. But she keeps us on task, we get so emotional that I think sometimes we get, you know, we just don't follow all the procedures. But I think there is something to be said about getting information on a parliamentarian, what it would cost, whether there are alternatives for us to get some guidance. Perhaps, I think Mr. Sawyer said it best when he said that perhaps it's just communication. If it's just communication, then perhaps we don't need someone for a long period of time. But I think we need to communicate better as a board, because I went to the board of supervisors meeting, and I said to the chairman, I said, you guys fight out loud. And he said, yes, we do. And I have to tell you guys, we're at a point now where we fight out loud, and this is not good for our school system, and it's not good for us as a board. I know we're in the learning process, but all of this unanticipated, it's almost like we're into these gotcha moments. And we owe our children and we owe the school division more than this. It's not really about individuals, any person or individual, because I think all of us violate Roberts rules. And sometimes it gets to be too sensitive. I don't, I think that person would be in an advisory, I don't see that person having any voting rights on this board. But just to make sure we're following the law, and that we create a more amicable situation on this board. I don't think we can afford to continue to have all of these surprises happening. The last meeting, there were two surprises, and we're getting better than scandal, so I'm thinking maybe we should get some commercials, Dr. Walz, and make a little bit of money. I knew, I knew no one who watched school board meetings, and now people are saying, when are you guys coming on? Are you on this week? They're actually taping their, they're taping scandal, because we are better than scandal, but that's not a good thing for us. Because I know that members of this board came on this board to do the right thing for kids. And I've always been a very professional individual. When it came to my staff, if there was an issue, we tried to take care of it. That's why I recommended the task force. There's nothing you can't solve if you take a professional stance and listen to people. And sometimes you need to have someone there to kind of keep us on task until we can become a little bit more fluid in our actions on the board. Thank you.
Thank you, Ms. Jessie. Anyone else? Mr. Deutsch?
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. I guess just to clarify, I didn't envision, I don't think anybody envisioned the idea of a parliamentarian as being a voting member. I've served as a parliamentarian on a number of organizations, and that position doesn't vote, been involved in plenty of other organizations where we have parliamentarians and they don't vote. So parliamentarians, most all the time, are advisory and non-voting. I appreciate Mr., the chairman's desire to increase dialogue on the board, and I think that will be healthy and help strengthen this board overall. And, you know, in that vein, I appreciate the very active role that the chairman took in our last board retreat, and look forward to continuing to work with the chairman at this upcoming board retreat to continue to improve dialogue as we continue to move forward.
Any further discussion? Thank you. Ms. Deutsch, this next one is yours as well. We've got revisions to policy 131, regular, special, and close meetings, and it's the first reading.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. This item was drafted, there's been a lot of discussion between board members, community members, et cetera, about the length of meetings, the importance of being more focused. As at the board, we have a small timeframe to conduct our business in. We meet once every, we meet twice a month in the evening, hopefully not passing midnight on a regular basis. In order to make sure that what we're doing is conducting the business of the body, this item was drafted to basically make sure that items that are brought forward have the consent desire of multiple board members, so that we're not just, you know, each is acting as individuals, but acting more as a body. You know, other full-time legislative bodies, people can drop in all the bills they want, there's committee process, there's months spent on it, but we have to move quickly and in a time-efficient manner and still get a lot of business that staff has that's essential. And so this is an idea to hopefully help us move forward and simplify things. All this says is that any item that a board member wants on the agenda has to have, at the time of it being put on the agenda, the consent of two other board members. So it hopefully will just keep us more focused.
Thank you, Mr. Deutsch. Ms. Ralston.
Do you mind saying the end of that again? You say it has to have what?
Yeah, let me find the exact words real quick. Well, here's the red line. Here we go. It simply changes it to where it says a school board member with the consent of at least two other board members, and in details how I can put in an item on the agenda. So it just makes sure that there's at least three board members who agree that this item needs to be discussed by the board, and make sure it's something that we want.
Thank you. Thank you, I got that now. Thank you.
Thank you. Ms. Jessie.
If I thought that the number of persons putting an item on the board would stop what's happening with our board, we put the items that caused us a great deal of time were items that were just very sensitive items that got on the agenda. I'm not sure I agree with having two people, because then you have to go to that person and tell them why, and you've got to negotiate with them. And I think it just creates more politicking behind the scenes. When the task force, I knew that Ms. Satterwhite had mentioned a task force and some other people were, but I didn't do a lot of calling around. I don't like all the calling around and asking other people. If you put your name on it, everybody's assuming that you are supporting that individual. So if I want you to support me, I put your, I add my name to your item, and then I vote against you, I just think an individual has a right to put something on the, on the agenda. And then, then it goes to the item that you want on the agenda, really on Friday morning, superintendent, chairman, vice chair. The one authority that, when I was in my training, the one authority that the chairperson has is to set the agenda. And I'm not sure if that's not part of some code, Virginia code. I'd have to go back and look at my training manager. It's not a part of the Virginia code. But generally, we, those items are brought to us, and we look at the timeline, we look at how many items, and we move things around. But I would, I may have something really special I want on the agenda, and maybe want to somehow convince the rest of the board to vote with me, but because I can't find a second person who's willing to stick his or her neck out, I wouldn't be able to put it on the agenda. That's just my view on that.
Hold on a second, I'm sorry, Ms. Ralston. Let's, if anyone else wants to go first before we go around again, I'll just briefly say that actually I think, I think there's merits to what Mr. Deutsch said, and I think there's merits to what Ms. Jessie said. Quite honestly, it'll be interesting to see, you know, I've some more time to think about this for good, which is good. You know, I've actually done a lot of research into this, and actually, since Mr. Deutsch brought up the board training that we went through, when I, when I met with, via phone, when I met with the two, the two people who ran that training, I had a lengthy conversation with them about different things that I was seeing as chairman, and they, I don't want to speak for them, but I'll certainly summarize the conversation, is that they were very surprised that one member had the right to add to the agenda. They said several times that, you know, the agenda shouldn't be held at the whim of one board member, even a minority of the board members. It should be, it should be done consensus, or at least a majority of the board. So based on, you know, again, summarizing a lengthy conversation, there are basically two ways. We're not, we're in the abnormal part, and this policy predates basically everybody on this board, so this has been done for a while now, the way this has been done. So essentially, there's two kind of main ways from my research, which is the chairman plans the agenda with obviously the guidance of the vice chairman and with the superintendent, and of course, the superintendent by law has the right to add to the agenda as he sees fit, but, or she, in other, in other places as well. But if we don't go the chairman route, then the only other route that makes sense to me is that a majority of the board agree to add something to the agenda, and not just, not just a fraction, a minority of the board to add to the agenda. So those are the two main ways that I've understood through my research that are done primarily, is either the chairman sets the agenda with the superintendent and the vice chairman, or at least to get onto the agenda, it takes a majority of the board, not a, not what, I mean, I think the number three is convenient in this case, but ultimately, I think it would take a majority of the board to add the agenda if we're going to go down that road. So if this does come up for a motion, and I will, I will follow my own guidance based on previous debate discussion, we just had it in a previous item, that if this motion does come forward as basically being three, or however it's worded, with the initial intent plus two other people, which ultimately it's three, I do intend to make an amendment to that motion to make it five total. So I'd just like to give the board notice on that as well, if we're going to, if we're going to go forward with it. So thank you. Anyone else? Ms. Ralston.
Okay, let me see if I have this correct. Beside for you and Ms. Jessie and the superintendent, are you saying that two more people, this is what this motion is saying?
No, the point of information, Mr. Deutsch, if I misspeak, please correct me. Ultimately, no, the superintendent doesn't have to approve anything added by the board. The superintendent can add anything by law, he can add to the, he can add to the school board agenda as he and his staff sees fit. Mr. Deutsch's proposal would be that the, basically three people, the one person who wants to initiate it, and two others, would be able to add to the agenda as he currently, as he currently has it written.
That would be you as chairman.
It could be any three members of the board. It wouldn't have to be me or the vice chairman, it could be any three, any three members, any three of us eight could do it, according to Mr. Deutsch's proposal.
Is that correct, Mr. Deutsch?
Yeah, that would be, that's right.
Okay.
Ms. Satterwhite.
Thank you, Ms. Chairman. Mine's a little bit of wording issue that I had with this. I was a little bit concerned about it, and so right now it's worded with the consent of at least two board members. I know we want to avoid the appearance of illegal meetings, because that's not something we want to see happen. So I would propose that, I don't know if I can go with five board members, but I propose we change this to either one board member or adjust the wording, and I have some proposed wording that someone helped me with. And let's see, maybe place on the agenda by the superintendent or by a board, school board member who has obtained the consent of at least two other board members by separate contact with each such board member. And that way, we're clarifying how you get that contact, and make sure that we don't get into trouble with any accusations of illegal meetings, because none of us want to see that happen. Thank you, Ms. Chairman.
Thank you, Ms. Satterwhite. Ms. Jessie?
So the question is, and perhaps you said that this, if you get three people to put something on the agenda, does the chairman, when he's conducting, deciding to do the agenda, have the right to remove the item from the agenda for various reasons? If you have, does the two votes, two people adding automatically places your item on the agenda? But does the chairman still reserve the right to remove an item from the agenda?
Actually, I currently do not have the authority to remove an item from the agenda. Any one member can add an item to the agenda. Now, obviously, we've had conversations with, and I know it happened in previous boards as well, encouraging to move around based on time or whatever's needed, with the important things, like when we had budget season, I asked that a few things be moved around, so in case we needed more time for budget season. And that's been done on a one-on-one basis with the person adding the agenda, but I currently do not have the authority, and neither did the previous chair. Every board member had the right to add to the agenda. I know Dr. Walz, who's in on our agenda planning meetings, he raised his hand. Dr. Walz?
Right, I was just going to reinforce what you said, that the previous two chairs have always had the right to move things around, because you, you know, you're sitting there in agenda planning, the officers and myself, and Mary assists us as well, Ms. McGowan. But I think that is important, and I think we're doing a little bit better tonight with the board meeting, but in terms of the time, but I think that that is something that's very important, that we have kind of an overarching look at things, hopefully not delay them as many as some of Ms. Ralston's items, but that is helpful.
Thank you, Dr. Walz. Ms. Jessie, you still have the floor.
I just don't want to give the appearance, for example, we moved something around, and that person feels, I think there was a discussion before, that there was a time that that individual wanted on the agenda, but we didn't think that this was, this would add to the agenda. So there become ill feelings, because your item has been moved around, and someone else said, well, I got my item in earlier, why was my item moved around? And maybe that your item required a great deal more discussion. I just think it's something that we probably need to think about before the vote, the next vote, and I'd need to get some more clarification. Thank you.
Thank you, Ms. Jessie. Any further discussion? Mr. Deutsch?
Thank you. Just in closing, I guess, I think that us talking about things before we bring them up helps increase dialogue. Obviously, we have to do it in one-on-one, you know, conversations, but I think the more we're communicating as board members, I think the more that we will work out our problems. I agree with, if Ms. Satterwhite wants to help clarify with the language she offered, I think that, that makes sense. I mean, I think we're already required to not violate FOIA, but if we want to clarify things, that makes a lot of sense. But I think the extent that we're working together as a board about what our agenda is, I think we're going to be able to work together as a body better and really be about our real business.
I will speak a little bit real briefly to, not, not to add to what Mr. Deutsch just said, but I think there's also, really, when it comes to the meetings that we have, which is two Fridays before a board meeting where Ms. Jessie and I meet with the superintendent and Ms. McGowan, ultimately, it comes down to time, and I know we've had further discussion about maybe even setting a limit on our school board meetings as far as time goes, and making sure the agenda, the agenda preparation would play a big role in that, and making sure that not only we get out of here on time, but the people that actually have to wake up and educate our children and, and work with our teachers and professionals get home at a decent hour as well. So I think that all kind of plays into the agenda planning as well, and so we can find a mechanism to, to add some control to that and give the chairman and the vice chairman some discretion. some discretion, which it sounds like other, other chairmen have used in the past, then we certainly can do that as well and make sure that agenda items are gotten to because it's not my intent in any way to stop anyone from adding to the agenda. But like I said, we have worked in the past to, to kind of massage it to make it more effective as, as effective as possible. So, with that, any, any further discussion? Okay. Moving right along to board matters. We'll start with Ms. Ralston to my left.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. I just want to thank all of the schools in the AppSCO, Back to School Night, and for T-shirts, and I have every elementary school that was passing out a T-shirt, and two middle schools and my high school. And it was wonderful, meeting parents that I had not met before and working with the principals in the schools. On Saturday, at Garfield, at noon, they will be honoring Supervisor John Jenkins to the Hall of Fame. And of course, our homecoming game is on Friday, and we will be there. There's been many things that has excited me about this new school year is the fact that I'm coming in at the right time so that I can understand what Mr. Klein is talking about, because the budget is very, very important. And so, I'm off to a good footing. I'm starting to read things and to understand what you're saying, which I did not truly understand that well last, last time. So, I look forward to that. I also want to thank the superintendent. He has, he constantly directs me in the right direction, and I trust him. And so, of course, you know, I'm buttering you up for something, but whatever it is, I'll save that one to a later date to use on you. But I thank everybody and welcome back, and it's another school year. And so, I'm very excited about where we're on our way to. Thank you.
Another moment we've all been waiting for. Mr. Brand?
Thank you, Chairman Soriaus. First of all, I want to, I want to thank this board for their unanimous support of putting me in this position a couple of weeks ago. I do appreciate that. After that, I keep referencing this very lengthy school board meeting we had a couple of weeks ago, but I'm going to do it again. But after that meeting, the next day, I did go to Clerk McQuig's office, and I did take the oath. And I tell you, it was, it was a very solitary moment. It was just myself and the clerk and my wife, and I raised my right hand, I took an oath, and I got to the words of the U.S. Constitution, and the sentimental side of me kicked in, and I had to kind of push through that. I could have just been experiencing sleep deprivation, I don't know, but I did get a little emotional when it, when I kind of came to that moment and thought about the responsibilities of, of being a board member. I do value this opportunity to represent the Brentsville District and, and all the students of Prince William County schools. I will do my best to represent them, and I will do my best to represent our board member Trenton while he is deployed. I don't have any updates on him tonight, but I will try to add that to, to future meetings so we can all kind of keep track of what, what he's doing across the ocean there. Locally, I did attend some back-to-school nights last week. I was lucky to attend Summit Victory, Pioneer Branch, and also the Noakesville School, and I want to thank the administrations of all those schools for welcoming me into their schools. I do plan, over the course of the next year, to, to get to all the schools in the district at least once, twice, three times as much as I can, to, to meet the teachers and the, and the principals and assistant principals, and, and hopefully develop a little bit of rapport when I, you know, with, with all those, those different schools and the people in those buildings. Lastly, I do want to thank, there's some folks up here that were very helpful to me over the course of the last couple of weeks. Ms. Arman, Ms. Urban, Ms. Simpson, Ms. McGowan, many folks here at the Kelly Leadership Center have been very helpful to me because as, as you can imagine, being a new board member and having it kind of thrust upon you at a very quick pace is, is definitely a learning process, an educational process. So, and it will be one over the course of the next year. So, I'll, I'll keep learning, which isn't necessarily a bad thing. And Riley, I do thank you as a former English teacher for bringing a little Robert Frost into the room tonight, so I appreciate that. You know, when, when National Poetry Month comes up in April, if you want to come back and do some more poetry, we can definitely share the floor and, and do that. That's all I got. Thanks.
Thank you, Mr. Brand. I did want to remind you that your board dues are due. You can pay them, you can pay them directly to me. So, and the other members may not have told you about those, but they, they do exist, I promise. You can just pay me directly, cash. Cash is accepted. Ms. Jesse?
I want to, also want to welcome our new board member, and members on this board are very helpful, and I think all of us will do everything we can to support you because if we don't, I think we will hear from overseas. There's no doubt in my mind that we will. But I do want to welcome you, and, you know, we're going to get out of here before 11:00, so.
No promises yet. You still have the floor.
I know. Oh, no, no, no. I have, I didn't, I didn't present last week, but I do want to say that I've, I've gone to back-to-school nights. Some of them, I've gone for 15 minutes to one, and in that Lake Ridge area, they're all, they're having board, these, the week for elementary works out well for some people, but it's, it's hard for me because I'm running from school to school. But the principals there are doing a great, great job, and I was able to meet some of the advisory councils, and some of the Girl Scouts should be contacting you, Ms. Urban, because I'd like to see some more girls at the podium here. Woodbridge High School is under new leadership, and I just want to tell you that their student engagement and involvement with teachers has been phenomenal. The culture in that building, you can feel, you can feel a difference in the culture in that building. I know Mr. Mulgrew was there. The student involvement, the teacher involvement, they designed their own senior lounge. There was a teacher who redesigned the, the room for the teachers, and she said, "I've been in this school for a long time, and no one knew I had this gift or this talent." So, I was just very, very impressed with what's going on because she got off to a very rocky start, but she has done well. I met with principals, and I talked to Mr. Klein about, as we're looking at all these new additions and trying to establish some communication so that we don't have long board meetings, if we can anticipate it. I think some things are given when you're doing boundary kinds of considerations, but the number one issue, and I didn't put it in the legislative agenda, and I, maybe it's too late, but I think it's not just class size. It's, it's really overcrowding because once you deal with the overcrowding, you will deal with the class size because you have the space. So, I'd like for that to be considered. And I want to make a special tribute, which I was not able to do last week, to a board member, Mrs. Ralston. You know, I worked with her with, I worked with her, I think I'll take it all back. I worked with her on the, the new school, the Hampton School. And so, last night, as I was watching these wonderful, wonderful debates, and I heard Tim Kaine mention Barbara Johns. It's a part of our history that most of us did not know about, and it's a part of our history that even the people at that school did not know about. And I think, I want to thank you for allowing, for working with us and with me and with that committee. They are very internally grateful. And on behalf of the Democratic Party of Prince William County, because it was not the Democratic Party of Prince William County who put your name up for recall, I just want to say that I know it's challenging, but it was not our Democratic Party that did that, although it appeared to be the Democratic Party of Prince William County Schools. You know, we, we all say that this is a non-political position, but in reality, all of us belong to a party. This lady over here, I think she's like the guru of the women Republicans. She is, you know, and I don't think that any of us should be embarrassed by the fact that we are represented by a party because we have different ideas, but when it comes to children, I don't play politics with children, but some things happen in the public arena that I wanted to say tonight, to say that I apologize to you for the person or whomever decided to put your name up because that was a very, very difficult and I think uncomfortable place to be, and thank you.
Thank you, Ms. Jesse. Ms. Satterwhite?
Thank you, Ms. Chairman. I want to thank Amanda and Eloise, our archers from Battlefield High School and Bull Run Middle School for being here tonight. We are so proud of them and the accomplishments that they've made. I also want to thank Mr. Buckfin, the parents, for being here. I'm looking forward, as the chairman said, to having our team back to recognize them for their huge accomplishments and look forward to that at a future meeting. So, thank you, Mr. Chairman, for mentioning that tonight. It is so good to say that we are finished with back-to-school nights. There are so many of them, and this year, because I have a senior in high school, I had to miss a couple. And to my schools I was unable to get to for back-to-school nights, I will get by to visit you before too long. There was a college fair one night, and when I have a senior in high school, I kind of have to make that a priority. Thank you to Battlefield High School for hosting the first college night. And Dr. Waltz mentioned that we do have another one coming up, so parents make sure to put that on your schedule. Also, when your senior in high school has his 17th birthday, and you know he's going to be in college next year and won't be home for that, his next birthday, you clear your schedule and you celebrate it. So, again, my apologies for not making some of those back-to-school nights. And I want to thank this board that I might actually get home before midnight tonight. So, thank you, Mr. Chairman.
Thank you, Ms. Satterwhite, and Mr. Deutsch.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. We had a lot of fun, had a lot of back-to-school nights recently. Want to highlight two things coming up. First of all, the social media training at Patriot High School on October 12th. The superintendent referenced it, and I think it's very important as people become more digitally connected that they are, especially at such a young age, that they're taking seriously what they're doing, the ways that really it can impact the future of their life. We have had students that are denied high school, or denied college scholarships because of what they do on social media. We've had people get into much more trouble because of what they do on social media. Everything can be a tool, but you have to learn how to use it wisely, and I appreciate the things that we continue to do to help train students, and I hope that students and parents take advantage of this opportunity. Also, one other deadline worth mentioning, October 17th is the deadline to apply to be a page in the Virginia General Assembly. It's a really cool opportunity for some students, and it's definitely worth applying, and go for it and have fun.
Thank you, Mr. Deutsch. Mr. Wilk?
Thank you. I'll be succinct. Just, it was really, it was crazy year for back-to-school nights. I was told you don't have to go to every one of them, but I did. And so, I, for all my principles, I don't know if that's going to be in every year expectation, but I did my best. I went to them all. Bless my wife and my family for being supportive of that. As Ms. Jesse was saying, Elementary Week is tough because they're all those nights, and I was running around like a madman in the districts trying to make sure I was at the beginning of one, at the end of other, but it was a good experience. I did go to the 12. However, Montclair, a little caveat, I didn't go to theirs, but I did go to their Family Fun Night the week before, so.
That counts.
Balanced it out, exactly. And so, I really enjoyed them. Great opportunities. I'll be back tomorrow. I'm in Patty tomorrow filming my board brief. That'll be fun, showing off some of their cool stuff. And Saturday morning, I'm very excited to join the Ashland and Forest Park Autism Walk with my family and my four-year-old son as we continue to raise awareness to this growing issue in our county and the nation. So, with that, I am done.
Thank you, Mr. Wilk, and I'll wrap up here. Mr. Wilk, I'm impressed that you made it to, well, it seems like there's a caveat there, but I was impressed that you made it to all your back-to-school nights. When you have 97 of them like I do, and you can make all of them, that'll be truly impressive. So, that, that would be something, that would be, so I did, just so everyone knows, I did make all of my 97 back-to-school nights, and I didn't even come close. So, I went to as many as I could with, with a lot going on in my life and in business as well at the same time. But I did make it to Potomac Middle School. I made it to Buckland Mills Elementary School. Also, made it to my, my son's Gainesville Middle School as well. So, made it to those for sure. My wife made it to the one at Glen Kirk Elementary, and she reported back that it's the same as it's always been, and great. So, they do a great job there. So, I also want to welcome Sean. I know that I briefly mentioned it at, I think it was 4:00 a.m., last school board meeting that you and I met previously before, and obviously had, had little interaction together, but always had good conversation about, about our community. And obviously, I live in the Brentsville District as well, not all that far from you, so always welcome to stop by and, and chat. Just don't bring any friends because that's an illegal board meeting, but just you and I, and we can do that. We can do that as much as you want. I believe that's my camera over here. I'd like to show off the shirt that Ms. Satterwhite and I got, which is the Reagan Archery shirt that they gave us, and with the back-to-back world champions staying on the back. So, I thank Mr. Buckfin and his crew for getting that to us. It's not going to come to a surprise to really any of you that this will be the first shirt that I have that says Reagan on it. So, I really, it's really, really going to be an added addition, added addition to, to my wardrobe. I will wear it with pride as, as I go on my, my walks and jogs down, down the road through the Brentsville District for sure. So, I will, I will wear that. Plus, coming from Appalachian, my dad being an outdoor writer since 1979, the camo always fits quite well. Sean, you were very astute in your point that you brought up at the very beginning. You, didn't take you long to figure out that, yes, Debbie and B are awesome, by the way. They will be, they will be your greatest assets on this board, so use them as, as much as you see fit, but not to the point where they have to call me. So, to go right up to that line and then stop just short of that, that's always wonderful when that happens. And Mr. Deutsch, you brought up a great point, and I'll, and I'll end on this. I get to go back to my college athletic roots on this, which is the social media side. I know no one's watching that actually is, you know, think considering how hard college athletics, maybe a few of their parents are. As a former college coach for 15 years, I coached the NCAA Division One, Division Two, Division Three, and junior college level. I can tell you without a doubt that any college coach worth his salt will research you online. And I'll tell you a very simple reason, there's a million reasons, and we can, we can have a long discussion on college athletics and why different things are important, but I'll tell you why. Because when you're a college coach, it's how I fed my kids. It's how I paid my mortgage. It's how I did everything that I did. It wasn't a hobby for me, being a coach at Purdue University wasn't something I did on the side. It was how I paid my bills. And so, if someone came in who thought posting certain things online was funny when they were in high school, and they chose to continue to do those in college, it could literally cost me my job. There's a million different reasons why you shouldn't be doing those things in the first place, and we can talk about those in, in these, in these other town halls and Safe Schools Advisory Council things that we do. But the reality is, is if coaches want to, if college coaches want to look at those from a selfish perspective, we need to protect what we do. There are plenty of stories you can look up. I won't, I won't mention any of them by name, but there are plenty of stories you can look up that coaches have lost their jobs because of things that have been first declared on social media and what the NCAA likes to call, which is their favorite saying of all time, "lack of institutional control." So, that is the NCAA speak for no one's doing their job, and you're all gone. So, although the NCAA can't fire you, certainly the presidents of the schools can. So, with that, I think it's a very important message that certainly I know applies to way more than athletics, but that's certainly my experience as well, future jobs, and even our roles here as, as elected officials. So, with that, I thought that was a good piece. I wanted to add to Mr. Deutsch's point about the social media side of things. So, with no further business before this board, this meeting is adjourned.